Especially for our customers and our client base. Our qualities at the leadership level is to be vested. So we brought in several managers in order to ensure that we're investing in our most valuable commodity, which is our human assets.
Yes.
Health and wellness, competitive wages, rewards and recognition, and then just overall dignity and respect, ensuring that that's the golden rule as we go around. When we look at the quality of lives for our personnel and our investigators, really, we have them focused on work-life balance. We want them to be able to go home with a little something in the tank for their family.
Yes.
Mentoring and being mentored, that's a two-way street. But we expect, as we hired different individuals with different skill sets, because we're a very diverse organization, that individuals can get some type of mentoring or at least become a mentor at some point in time to someone else within the agency.
Okay.
Obviously, team building, getting people to understand that they have the autonomy to do their jobs. We trust them. We want them to do that. So we want them to get out of that comfort zone that they might not have been used to working in a different agency.
Okay.
Having them think outside the box, you know, resources and funding could always be better. But at the same time, there's a lot of things that we can do, just being creative and using other systems, other services that are already out there, and be able to bridge those relationships so that we can enhance our effectiveness through them. And then just timely reports, investigations, and overall, just having fun. And with the having fun part, it means being able to see your complainants and your clients coming in and being able to know that you are providing a service, not just to them, but also to the officers that are also being brought in, and ensuring that they are leaving with what is right. Because we cannot get that part wrong. This is kind of our strategy as we look forward. A lot of, there's police oversight, and then there's law enforcement oversight. And I'm just going to move right to the next one. And so there's a balance between this. When it comes to the Office of Professional Standards, we put a premium on the policing aspect of oversight. This is the prevention. This is being able to go out, being able to train, to teach, to get boots on grounds, to meet our people where they're at, and to provide that service to them. It's also a way that we provide this when we engage with district centers, when we engage with other organizations that are within our community, as well as when we engage with any type of stakeholder that's within the city or even outside of the city that does business. The policing side of the house really keeps administrative misconducts to the lowest level. Because, one, we're being active, we're getting out there, we're teaching, we're training, and we're ensuring that people understand what their rights are, what a violation looks like. And we're ensuring that we understand, within the different communities, how they communicate. When we look at the law enforcement side, that means an event has happened. This is, this is where consequence happens. This is where, at the city, the state, and the national level, we're not going to be in a good position. So when you look at that, that's an arrest. A law enforcement action has actually taken place. Person has been in handcuffs or an individual is being taken to a detention center or a jail cell. And so this has the most, the highest risk to us and to our citizens. At this level, this is where we see excessive force. This is where we may have a vehicle pursuit that has some type of collateral damage within the community that that pursuit was actually in. This is where the improper procedures are at their highest. And so the law enforcement piece comes with a lot of consequences that are very, that have to be mitigated. The way we mitigate that is on the policing side of oversight, to ensure that we are doing the teaching, the training, and that we're getting out there in front of this so that people understand that we're there. We are the eyes, ears, and consciousness of our communities, and that we're informing leaders of what we're seeing on the ground based off of trends and data. Now, this is our complaint process. Once we receive a complaint, we initiate the OPS investigation. Once we're complete with that, we provide it to the CPRB for a hearing. On their disposition, if they sustain, if they don't sustain. If they sustain, it'll go back to the Cleveland Division of Police or to the Director of Public Safety. CPC has the authority to review anything that the CPRB does as far as a disposition at the end of it.
Can you receive a complaint directly from the citizen?
That's, that is the primary way. A citizen can come right to OPS. One of the things that we've initiated this year is mobile teams. So when a citizen does call and says, hey, I have a complaint, the first thing we ask, would you like us to come to you? And the reason we do that is because our citizens are working nine to five. And so we will flex our hours in order to go after work. We will do whatever we need to on the weekends. And it's important to us to be available to them 24/7.
So that does not preclude a citizen from going to file a complaint with police department?
No, absolutely not. All right. These are our touch points. Once a complaint does come in, this is where the investigator, once they're assigned, they're going to reach out, let the individual know, I'm your investigator. I have your case. I'll be contacting you in several weeks after I collect all the evidence so that we can do a formal interview. We'll also contact them if we end up extending past the 45 days or the 75-day mark. This is something that we've started this year. So we were unable to grandfather that in for the past.
Do you have backlog?
We currently still have a backlog, yes. So I have a couple of files that will, that will show us that. This is just our six steps, just to let the citizens know exactly how we do it. This way, they understand we do a preliminary. Once we receive the complaint, that way we can identify, is it criminal? Is it not criminal? Does it fall in our jurisdiction? At this point in time, if it doesn't fall in our jurisdiction, we see if there's a support or a service that's out there where that complaint may actually go into. And then we, on their behalf, we will call them and make a referral for them. We will also put them in contact with that support group, and we'll do any type of coordination as well if we need to. This is just our overall, our overall strategy for just community engagement. And this is also within your, within your packet. We have 10 lines of effort. Those 10 lines, when we break them down, you'll see that just the first five, this is how we engage our community. This is, these are the systems and the processes we want to ensure that we're moving to so that they're all green. The things that are in red are basic systems currently that we are still working on to implement. Those things that are in amber, they're working models. But we're going to take 90 days to reassess them to see and make sure that they're functional, suitable, and maintainable for us. Those things that are in green are things that we've currently been doing, and we've been doing them successfully for some time now. As the chair, as the, as the board is aware, we have now assigned investigators to each Congress member, or city council member. The reason for this is they are expected to show up at those meetings. They're expected to set up discipline or display booths, and they're expected to communicate with the citizens. If the citizens have a case that is with us, they can provide a status on that case. The typical team that goes out to these is the Community Engagement Director along with an investigator. This also allows council members to reach out and contact their direct investigator in case they have any types of questions, if they want to know data, things of that nature. This is a rollout of our social media. Last year, we had no social media. This year, we've already, we already have four social media platforms to try to extend the depth and breadth out to the citizens. This also allows them, once they scan our QR codes, to be able to file complaints on our sites as well. So we're trying to give them more opportunities as well as larger access to our base to ensure that we are capturing these complaints. And we want to make it as easy as possible for them as well. If, if you don't mind, since the CPRB and OPS is the same organization when you look at it, we would also like to just go straight into the CPRB portion because we're all one agency with the CPRB having oversight.
Explain that to the citizen.
So the Civilian Police Review Board has oversight of the Office of Professional Standards. They are a nine-member committee. They review all investigations. At this point in time, they will review the investigations that are presented by the Office of Professional Standards, and then they will have a disposition on those. Once they do a disposition, which means that they will conclude at the end of the investigation, there's several different, exonerated, insufficient evidence, unfounded, or they will sustain the allegations to that individual.
So all of your, you report directly, your findings, you report directly to the Civilian Police Review Board?
Correct. We are depend, we are independent. We report directly to the Civilian Police Review Board, who's also independent.
So nothing to the safety director, nothing to the chief?
Correct.
Introduce yourself, Billy.
Excuse me for being late. I am Billy Sharp, the Chair of the Civilian Police Review Board. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Administrator Chris go ahead with the presentation.
So based off of the approval of the operation manuals through the courts and seeing how the authorities are going to increase with the board as well as with OPS, we've identified two positions that we are looking to grow our, our structure with. The first one is a senior investigator, our compliance officer, and then the other one is a projected attorney slash compliance officer. The reason for this is based on the way the new operational manuals read. When Internal Affairs receives a citizen's complaint that states criminality, that, that investigation still has to come to us. Because administratively, there's always administrative violations within, within any type of violation. So we still have to go through it, and we still have to present it to the board.
The board members to Mr. Sharp, who, who confirms board?
Who, okay. So that's done between the mayor's office and city council.
Okay. So ultimately, to the view of public, the mayor will make recommendations to the council for ratification?
Hmm, no. The, the mayor, the mayor has two, not two, has four direct appointments, and then city council has the rest, direct. So they don't have to confer with each other to approve?
Have to confirm the mayor's appointment?
No.
Okay.
And then vice versa, he doesn't have to confirm, confirm yours?
So which of the, which of the members are from city council?
Oh, wow. I know, I am, I'm a mayor appointee. I believe Mr. Brown is, Mr. Gonovich is a city council appointee. Mountcastle, I believe, is a city council appointee. Hardy is city council appointee. Parker's city council. Did I say Ms. Miller? I believe Ms. Miller is a mayor appointee. Graham and Gatten are city council.
Did they receive any compensation?
Yes. It's a monthly stipend. Yeah.
So this is a jurisdiction for the board. So as you can see, the investigations come up from OPS. OPS is, has jurisdiction over harassment, improper procedures, lack of service, property complaints. Once we complete our investigation, we present it to the board, and then that's when the board has disposition of it. Once they hear it, they will make a decision off of the specification, which is the allegation, a disposition on, is it exonerated, unfounded, insufficient, or sustained? And then they will add a rationale to the bottom of that just to explain how they came to that conclusion for that end result. This is our current five-year strategy, 2023 to 2028. When we look at it, because of the, the approved operational manuals along with the new authority that is both presented to OPS as well as the CPRB, we are having a requirement to look at having an internal attorney, someone that is in-house to OPS that advocates on behalf of OPS and the CPRB. This includes, because the CPRB now has termination authority, ensuring that these, that our in-house attorney is looking at anything that OPS sustains or anything that we are recommending a insufficient, exonerated, or unfounded, we have to have that individual there to be able to look through, make sure that we are following everything to a T and that there's no questions that are going to get us into either arbitration or that will violate any rights to those officers or to the citizens when those cases are being presented.
So you, you present your findings to the safety director, correct?
No.
And there's no, there's no notification to the safety director at all?
No. With, so with the new, the new manuals, we make the, the final decision.
So you make the determination that an officer can be terminated?
Correct.
Okay.
So they make the determination, they will then send that to the chief?
Okay.
Well, that will all go to the public safety director because it is a termination.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's got to be some notification.
Correct. So that'll go, the safety director does have the ability to depart. If they decide to depart, they have to provide their rationale for that departure. If it's not convincing, then the board can say enforce. If it is convincing, then the board can say we accept.
Yes, okay. Chris, keep going.
So this is just the investigation from OPS to CPRB all the way through to the CPRB for final disposition. So as you can see, at, once it goes through and is presented to the Civilian Police Review Board, if it's unfounded, it's completed, that's where the CPC has the right. If it's appealed, or if they just see it and they want to take it, they have a right to do that. If not, and they sustain it, then that's where it will go from the CPRB to either the chief, depending on what the violation is, or to the Director of Public Safety, depending on the, the group level and the violation.
So, Mr. Administrator?
Go ahead.
If I may. So the CPC's role is if a complainant disagrees with our finding
Yes.
to say what our punishment was not strict enough, then the CPC can intervene and say, we want to up it. They can only up it, they can't lower it. But they do have the ability, even without a citizen's complaint, to, as the administrator said, to grab that case and say, we want to try to increase the punishment.
So that's, so that's your engagement, the CPC? That's your only engagement?
That, that is, I wouldn't say the only engagement. They, they also have the authority to request files from us. They can ask us for closed cases, they can ask us for certain cases, dispositions. They can go as far back as they want to. Those are things that either we have to create for them or that's already been created that we just have to provide.
See, there was some confusion this morning when the CPC, I don't know if you heard her testimony this morning, where they said they had requested files and documents on the three commanders that were sent to them for approval. And they did not get the information that they had requested out of the administration. So explain that to me. I mean, if they have the, if you, if they have the ability to request of you, why don't they have that?
So that's not within our jurisdiction.
Right.
So CDP is the one that holds those records. They are in control of those. Well, we, the records that we have are any cases that we open for administrative misconduct.
Oh, so specifically for those case, okay.
Yeah, correct. Specifically for what our responsibilities and authorities are.
So for those three commander positions, you would not engage yourself into that?
No.
I would not.
Okay.
And, and, Mr. Chair, so the cases that they can request from us have to be cases. So it can't just be, in this case you're alluding to, it can't be just general files on officers that we produce. We only produce cases that come to us.
Okay. So of the, at the end of your process here, founded or unfounded, how many cases have you heard as of today?
As of today, I believe we've heard 134.
And you've recommended, out of 134, how many terminations?
Zero.
Zero.
Zero, okay.
Just note, Mr. Chair, that manuals have just been approved within the last 30 days.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, continue.
So this is the data set.
Yeah.
So if I can just bring your attention to the binders that we provided.
Yes.
So when you go through there, there's a slide, a presentation, which is what you're currently seeing.
Yes.
After that.
Is this actually for them?
Mm-hmm.
You have extra ones here? Is that an extra one there? Here, here's, here's an extra one right here.
You got it.
Okay, you got it, okay.
You're good. So to the left of that is all of the memorandums that we've completed on behalf of, of the board, Mr. Chair. Those are justifications on why we would like to look at having an attorney versus a compliance officer. There's a cost associated with that, along with a justification with an authority, with the authorization for it and why it's needed. We also placed in there our training curriculum for how the board needs to be trained, as well as OPS. There's a budget information memo that's also in there, and it's got a three-year comparison for OPS and the CPRB just to assist with looking through and being able to say, this is where those funds are being spent, or this is where those funds are not being spent. And then at the very end is a data set. So the data packet, what you'll see at the first on the very end is a monthly. After that, once you get through the monthly set, that's going to be everything from the first of the year to the end of September. So that's going to tell you all the cases, a breakdown by district, a breakdown by ward. It's going to give you your, your samples on demographics, gender, who's being pulled over, or who's being, who's alleging misconduct?
Yes.
Who they're alleging it against. The other piece in there is you'll see our breakdown for the wards and the districts. So at the very end, what you'll find is for each of you, there is a data set that will give you a hot, a heat map, that will tell you within your district and within your ward, where you're, where we're receiving most of the allegations and what type of allegations they are. And then it will also break down how many cases we have open within your ward. So this was a new process that we created, that we started opening up. And this was based off of last year, this time when we had this meeting. Mr. Chair, the, the board asked, how are you going to assist us with data? This was a, a system that we put into play as well as ensuring that the investigators that are assigned to each council member is able to provide that data as well.
And just to, to put a finer, finer, I'm sorry, to, to the chair, to put a finer point on that, we thought it important that each council member had data within their ward to see what hotspots were, where we were getting the, the most complaints filed, which equipped the council person to then deploy resources in that area.
And when was that provided, or that has not been provided yet?
No, it, it's been provided. So we've, we've done a series of one-on-ones with individual council members. I believe we have three present today that we did the one-on-ones. And in those packets, that data, that data was there.
Okay, okay. Continue.
So, Mr. Chair, the intent is the monthly report will start going out to all council members to include the data set that's specific to their district as well as their ward.
Okay.
We'll ensure that that goes out so that, one, the wards can all see how they compare with one another
Yes.
and where they may have to flex resources back and forth. Working through the Community Engagement Officer, we're looking at adding more services or more organizations to.
Yes.
So that, that way we can share that information with them as well. And that will at least help them and assist them with where support and resources need to go in hopes that we can align our efforts together.
Okay.
Based off of where we were last year to where we're at this year, in May, we kind of did a reset. When you look at June and July, that's when we brought on a lot of our new members, a lot of our new investigators. It took us a couple of months to start training them up. But now you can start to see how well they're doing. So in August, they were able to complete 34 cases. And then in September, they were already at 41. This is just because of the mindset, the passion. We invest in them, but we also don't just use the traditional resume. We use, we use a lot of cognitive matters. We want to look at integrity, character. We want to understand where they come from within the city, outside of the city, what their experience has been. Like I said, we have a very diverse organization. And that goes from any type of education level to any type of experience that has been out there in the street. We want to ensure that the individuals that are in our office, they have kids in the Cleveland District School System, because we want to be able to have sensors throughout the communities. And it's always best that when we do that, that they're, they're involved in the communities and that their kids are a part of the community. Because that information kind of feeds back to us when we start looking at different things.
Okay.
And so that concludes our presentation. As the Chair of the board, we could take a...
Thank you, thank you. Explain to us what engagement you have with the federal monitor.
So through the chair, to the board. With the monitoring team, we do engage with them roughly about five times a month.
Okay.
We have a monthly meeting with them where we discuss our trends, our analysis, where we're currently at and what we're currently doing. They are a part of a lot of the other meetings that we are a part of as well, to where we coordinate, where we try to align our efforts to make sure that we're informed with what other agencies are currently doing, our, what current revisions that they're making, and that assists us.
Is that a virtual meeting, or is that face-to-face?
Most of them are MST meetings.
Okay.
They're virtual. Usually when we do our face-to-face is when we have any, any time that the monitoring team is coming in, meeting with Judge Oliver.
Yeah, okay. Because we're attempting to schedule with them to come before us to make a presentation. I just want to get a better understanding how you are, how you are engaged. Explain again with your, your engagement or your interaction with the CPC. Explain that once again.
So through the chair, to the board. Our interaction with the CPC is, we do have touch points with the co-chairs
Right.
as long as, as well as with their executive director.
Okay.
When they have a, a request, it'll usually come from the co-chairs and the executive director. That way, it comes down to us and we can start working it. They also have another path line to where they go through the PAT team. PAT team will kind of flush all of that stuff out because it goes to different organizations, because everybody has a different piece that they have to provide.
Okay, because they indicated today, they have not dealt with a case yet.
So they have, they've received cases?
Yeah, but they have not.
But they have not dealt with one.
Right, you're right, okay. Do any of the GPOs have to come before you?
So the GPOs don't come before us as far as approving.
And GPO to the view of general police, police order?
General police order or a division notice.
Right.
We do receive those, but we receive those for the content of the investigation.
Okay.
Depending on the year that the allegations were created. That was going to tell us what general policy order we're going to look at or what division notice we need to look at. We also have the authority to make recommendations when it comes to general public orders, when it comes to equipment, when it comes to training. And we do play an active role in some of that training when it comes, when it starts at the creation. So when CDP is starting to create a training model for their officers or their seniors, there are some where they incorporate OPS.
Okay. The indication that you want in a, a staff attorney, I'm assuming that's a full-time attorney, correct?
Yes, sure.
So you're going to include that in your upcoming budget? How are you doing that?
So, through the chair, to the board. So we are right now doing a cost estimate. The challenge we have is, when you look at the three-year comparison, is we turn in a lot of funds. So it's, it's very hard for me at this time to say what, like...
When you say you turn in a lot of funds, explain that.
So in the last three years, we've turned over $1.5 million. We, last year...
You, you returned to the general fund budget?
Correct.
Okay.
And so last year, we operate at a 1%. So we receive 1% of the CDP. Most of that is about $300,000 in salary, and then the rest of it is actual equipment, training, the things that we need to do in order to make sure that we develop, evolve, and that we have the right type of organization and the right type of growth that goes with that. In the two years that we've been at the 1%,
Yes.
we've been lower than what we were before that ever occurred. So in 2021, we were, the office received 1.5. 2023, they received 1.3 million. And then in 2020, well, I'm sorry, 2022, they received 1.3. And then 2023, we received 1.1 million out of the 2.3.
So the 1% was established by who and when?
So the 1% is established through the mandate for the consent decree.
Okay.
So the consent decree states that we receive 1% of the...
Of the police budget?
Of the police budget, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Do you, you have no indication what that lay item will be for that attorney?
So for the layout, which is in the comparison memo?
Yes.
For the attorney, it's $114,000 at the top end. For the compliance officer, it's $70,000 at the top end.
So that's two positions?
Well, it's two different positions because what we were trying to do was do a cost estimate of what we would have, what we could afford and sustain and maintain over the long run if we were unable to increase our salary line.
And you've indicated that will fall below the 1%?
If, yes. Because of, as of right now, where we're currently at with just a salary adjustment, 114 would.
Okay.
Have, well, 114 would put us over. And the reason for that is we are currently trying to ensure that we're competitive with our pay. The office has not received a, an adjustment on pay since 2015. So what an individual comes in, it's the 2%. Now, typically, you know, typically people wouldn't be worried about that. You know, coming back from NACO, though, I am concerned with it because our investigators are good. And not only are they good, but at NACO, 237 other agencies saw it. They are already trying to inquire and poach our individuals, which makes sense. Because they, we, we trained them well, not only do, and we invested them. So I always tell them, go. It's lifestyle. It's something better for your family. I will never hold anyone back, and I do. I market them. I, I let people know, like, they have great capabilities. I think the investigators we have should be senior investigators at some other agency
Yeah.
doing great things. And that includes the Community Engagement Director. They have the passion, the will, and they can take on a lot of other challenges.
But you're aware also, all the other challenges that we have by department and division as well. You just heard, if you were here, CRB, we only have six fee... You just heard, if you were here, CRB, we only have six field outreach people, only six for the entire city. Great concern to this body because of the level of violence, et cetera. So we're all trying to figure out how to balance the, the challenges that we're confronted with, department by division by section. And we're all attempting here to do the right thing. And then we have these external requests that have been, that are going to be coming to us, I be, I, I E. Gateway and some of these other things that we have to contend with this legislative body. So we're trying to make the right decisions. We're trying to make sure that we allocate dollars where we need the dollars to go, and at the same time, address or complete our mission assignments, what we need to do here. I mean, we got a lot of challenges. I'd be the first to tell you that. I've been over here a long time. We got major challenges that are confronting this body. If you were to interview members of this body, we don't have enough funds for housing rehab, rehabilitation programs. We don't have enough funds for senior assistance programs. We could go, we would like more people in our rec centers. I could go down the list of all the challenges and requests that are, that are confronting this body. So I will tell you at this point, you know, when that budget comes before us, you know, we will, you can have my assurance, not only you, but all the other sections, that we're going to do our best to review your request. And, you know, and then we'll act appropriately. And so, on that, yes, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair to the board, we're still in a, a growing phase, and I think the administrator has demonstrate, demonstrated rather, what this office should look like at full capacity.
Yes.
So some position, some new positions were needed, and we identified that. So this is our best effort to try to make this office and this board the, the best it can be.
Okay.
So just, I would say, as you deliberate, just know that we're, we're, we're in a change phase. We're still building, again, with 115. We've got some new responsibilities, so that gives us a bit more, a bit more work to do, so.
Okay. I'm, I'm just going to wrap it up before I open up for questions. What would get, tell me what your general opinion or thoughts are with your, your relationship with the Cleveland Police Department?
Our relationship is mutually respected. Well, through the chair to the board, we have a very mutual respect-
Okay.
-for one another. The Cleveland Division of Police does not hold back when we ask for support or we ask for assistance, when we ask for our files, when we ask for disciplinary records. We do not get the Heisman from them. They are, they are open and they are willing to assist. When we identify systems that don't currently exist that need to exist, they have been very welcoming to bring us to the table and have that conversation with them. This is a mutual beneficial relationship, because we understand that at one point, we do have to preserve what we have over at the Cleveland Division of Police, but we also have to ensure that we're not allowing people to go out and violate our citizens. So it takes more than just our office to do that. It, it, I mean, it takes a whole city to be able to do that.
Sure.
So we know that we have to have those working relationships with them. And so far with the Cleveland Division of Police, they have been willing to come to the table at, at mostly every request that we've had.
Good. And that's what I need to hear, because it's all about transparency, accountability, professional conduct. That's what we're about. That's what, what we, we insist upon at it in this council on this side of the table. So we, I want to make sure that when you make a request to CPD, you're getting that. And at the other side of the equation, that they don't look upon you as an adversary, that we're, you're here to work together.
Well, just, just to add, through the chair to the board, we go, we go over and beyond. They had, I want to say, four months ago, a fallen officer. We went over to the third district to grieve with those officers and know that we're in it just, just as well as they are. So we go over and-
Okay. Questions of the committee? Any questions of the committee? Councilwoman Stephanie Alst Jones.
Yes, thank you. Let me say that to the end. So I'm looking, it was a, okay. Can you help explain this specifically, the districts? So maybe I'm looking at them wrong. How are the districts dispersed? Is it by police district or your districts?
No, so it's by, through the chair to the council member, it's by the districts, the police districts. And the reason that is, is because as we receive allegations, we have to tie it to that district so that we can, so that they understand the trends that we're seeing, so that they can react appropriately.
So that's what I wanted to say. So at least I know on my, we got a, it may be a typo, because it has me in District Four, which probably is District, is Joe Jones. I'm in District Three and District Five. So it may be a thing of like just going over, just looking back at it to just make sure the right people are in the right places. The other thing was, okay, I'm looking at it forward.
Possibly some overlap in the way the ward is.
And it's hard, I'm sorry, because I know it's just looking through. Okay. Because I want to make sure I'm reading this right.
Through the chair to the councilwoman, so there's a lot of back coding that needs to occur when we, when we do this.
Okay, but we're getting in the right, right direction, and I appreciate that. The one other thing was in here, it talked about policy recommendations.
Correct.
So when you look, I think I didn't miss it. Maybe it's not over here. Hold on, let me find it. I should have tagged this. No, it might not be over here. Where did I see it at? Oh goodness. Anyway, let me ask my question. So for the policy recommendations, did you, did you, I know it's, who were your policy recommendations sent to?
So those are given to the board first. Or the board sometimes will make a recommendation for the Office of Professional Standards to do the research and come up with a different policy or a revision or a change, depending on how they read it. And I apologize, so through the chair to the councilwoman. So those are the two methods that we use. Typically, when our investigators are doing an investigation and they start to identify a gap that's there, that's when they'll bring it to my attention and say, I think we need to look at this policy a little bit deeper. That's when we'll get with our data analysts and start looking and pulling numbers to see where we're at and how many, how many allegations came from maybe that policy or that violation.
Okay. Alst woman?
And through the chair to the director, with that being stated, so it goes, the policy recommendation goes to the board, and then what happens?
So through the chair to the councilwoman, so it goes to the board, once the board votes to approve, then it will go to the Cleveland Division of Police. We'll send it over to their policy division, and then that's when they'll take a look at it. If they don't agree with it, they can send us back a departure from it. We can then brief the board on it. If they do agree with it, then we just do a check every 60 to 90 days to see where it's actually at for being revised within that. Some, at some times, there are points to where the Cleveland Division of Police will put out a division notice in order to try to get that implemented student and later.
And through the chair to the director, where does the CPC come into that regard, regarding the policy update or change?
So, so through the chair to the councilwoman, so CPC comes in because their authorities and responsibilities is to look at all policies, and that goes through their policy, their policy committee. Once it goes through them, whatever they agree or disagree with, whatever they see as potentially a citizen's violation, they will make note of that, and then they will work through CDP in order to get that fixed, rectified, or revised.
Okay. And then I guess this is my, just my general question, and then maybe this is to the chair. When have we convened all the different parties to look at all of the rules and ordinances to really tighten up the language? Because we've talked about overlap, duplication, it's not in alignment. Has there been an actual convening of all these different partners so that we can look to propose updates as they may be necessary since we're in it?
There's never, to my knowledge, there's outside of a case like this or during the budget hearings, there's never been a case or a situation I'm aware of where everybody has sat down in the room. We have repeatedly said, and I will repeat it again, that if there are, is there provisions or sections within the codified ordinances that you feel are not working or not advantageous or an obstruction, to let us know. I, I pose that question all the time to the Division of Police, Fire, EMS, et cetera, Animal Control. If there's something there that you think we need to prove upon, then by all means, let us know. But there's, there's, to my knowledge, there's been no getting everybody in a room.
Through, through the chair to the council lady, it, it has been suggested, we are looking at that at the end of our training of the manuals, to get all parties involved to kind of do exactly what you said. Everybody needs to state what is their, what is their particular role in this, because I think there is some overlap. I think at that time, obviously, we would invite the council to come. I think at that time, we can look and see what potential overlaps are and what systems, to your point, may or may not be working.
Yeah, well, I, that's, I'm putting this out there. I think this is actually something that City Council should do-
Oh.
As the elected legislators.
To organize it.
I absolutely think that we need to be the convener. We, again, and it's ancillary, you know, I don't know all of the things of every department, but from even observing some of our operations, I think we can be, work to be a little bit more efficient and effective. So Chair, if you would be open to, I would be more than happy to work with you and your office-
Yes.
-to figure out, you know, as we are getting into the new year, to just arrange some type of working session for those who are willing, for us to just go through the practices of who's responsible for what, and even seeing how that coincides with the operation as a legislator. You see what I'm saying? Because at the end of the day, we're the ones that are supposed to be legislating, and we have these different groups and seeing how those things coincide. So that was the reason. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. And I would, I'll just follow up on that. I would say to you now, based, based on your comment, I would say, and I'm going to say this to the other folks that are going to come up, and I hope the CPC and Community Relations Board is watching this as well, because we're going to, the PAT team up next, where you see overlap, where you see areas of concern or contention, start documenting those now. Because I think, I, I will tell you, to the viewing public, this has got to be very confusing. I mean, I'm going to tell you right now, because I have people that, you know, you've got the Community Police Commission, CPC, you got the Community Relations Board, CRB, you got the Police Accountability Team, PAT, Office of Professional Standards, OPS, Civilian Police Review Board, CPRB, and then Office of Prevention, Intervention, and Opportunities, PIOYYA. I mean, I've got to tell you, man, this, I mean, I, 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 at times, I got to figure out who's on first and who's on second here. It gets very confusing to the people who are, and then you've got, outside of that, then you've got the federal monitor-
Mm-hmm.
-and that whole operation. And so, you know, at the end of the day, each one of these sections, there's a budget.
Mm-hmm.
And we, the taxpayers, are supporting the operation of each of these sections. And so it does come of great concern. There's a lot of questions as to accountability, as to overlap, who's responsible for what. And so, you know, it becomes, so I, I, our, our staff assistant here, Luba Kunis, she is taking all this down. So again, those of you in attendance, start thinking about this upcoming gathering. We'll figure out how to schedule that. I don't know if it'll be done by the end of the year or not, because we've got a lot of stuff on our plate, plus CRB, excuse me, CPC is going to have new board members. So that might be a lesson in futility. We might wait to see what the new members are that are going to be appointed by the, by the mayor. And then we'll go from there. But I appreciate council ladies, the ch, actually. Any other questions? Oh, yes, Dan. Councilman Kelly.
Through the chair to you folks. Brother, brother sheriff, how are you?
All right.
You know, I appreciate you guys. I've, I've had to run over and talk to this group myself personally with my aide. Guys are very open, you know, you give a great presentation. I think everybody on this side of the table feels you're genuine. We appreciate that. Just keep in mind, I was going to mention that the new board members, but the dean mentioned it, just were worried about collaboration and the relationships. And then he said overlap, but duplicating work, you know, see, we have so many boards who are allocating funds, and we just want to make sure that we're not duplicating a lot of it. But thank you, thank, and thank you for waiting, both you two, appreciate it. You didn't wait, Billy, but that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I know I came in a little bit late. I just want to say thank you to your team. You've been at my community meeting a couple of times, and you explained in details with the residents there about your staff and how you operate your division. That, you know, they were much appreciative of you breaking that down and then following up to come back with your staff. You've been back once or twice. The other gentleman here, I forget, he's not here, but he's been, he, he showed up a couple of times. So you're very visible. And, and the residents are now getting to build a relationship, because you start with a conversation. Then you build a relationship, and that's when you get trust. If you're not seen in the community, for them to understand, as our chair just spoken, it's so confusing of so many different organizations out there, they don't know which, which or what y'all do. But due to your showing up and showing presence in the community, you know, that made a difference, you know, with your, you know, what your department does. But I just have one question.
Go ahead.
When you did come to, Chair, to the, to the team, I, I'm just looking over your, quite a bit of information. It's going to take a minute to go over to them.
Okay.
But this one captured my attention. Top three allegations? When you came to my meeting, how do you assess the breakdown of how many complaints per ward that you received? You know, do you have that data, Chair, to the committee?
Who can comment?
So through the chair to the councilwoman, so we do break that down. The way we break the data down is the allegation and where the resident or the community, community member was while, when that occurred. And then that ties it to the districts. From there, then we break it down by gender, from the complainant to who, who the complainant was, the member from the CDP. That way, we look at it from that direction as well. The three allegations that you're looking at is lack of service, unprofessionalism, and then I believe improper procedures was a, was a third one.
Okay.
I believe that was the third one. When we're looking at that, we look at trends in communication and language. Our communities are all different. Our communities have a different culture. Some of them speak a different way. So when we look at unprofessionalism, sometimes it's because of the way that someone is engaged. And they feel based off of their culture, that's not appropriate. As it was stated earlier, we do have a lot of diversity within Cleveland. So that means it's up to us to be very well-rounded and educated in who those communities are and what that culture looks like, which is why you have seen us out there and about more so than what we've been in the past, and why it's so important that we get out there and we meet with them. Because if we don't understand the environments and the communities that we're operating in, then we're really not doing a service for them. To the, to the chair, just on your question about the redundancies in support systems, OPS is small, so we do cross-functioning teams. So we train everyone to do more than just one job, just because of the way that, that we have to service our communities. When we send an investigator out to take an interview or to do a canvas, we send that investigator out with another investigator whose primary job is social services and support. So while the investigator is doing the interview with the complainant, the other individual is sitting down monitoring behavior, understanding the, the environment, the climate. Sometimes the root cause of these complaints has nothing to do with the relationship or the engagement with the officer. Sometimes it has something to do with the resources that were or were not available, or the fact that somebody wasn't getting back to them to assist them. So we put a support package, and we probably give more of these agencies more work than what they plan on, because we, we tout them, and we let the complainants know, these are the resources, these are available to you. And then that's where we offer the three-pronged approach of, we can take you there, we can coordinate it for you, or we can just provide you the information. coordinate it for you, or we can just provide you the information. And that was a strategy that our, our community director put together, because his whole focus is, how do we answer what the actual problem is? How do we get to the why this, this occurred?
Thank you. Council lady.
Thank you.
I was going to say, really quick, through the chair to the board, your initial question, Chair, about the confusion of all of these organizations, I can tell you, I get it in the neck every day. People ask me, you guys are doing X, Y, and Z, I have to explain to them, no, that's not us. So when we cooked up the idea of the community engagement officer and ratified that position, I think it has us out there, as Administrator says, getting to the point where people know the difference between the two, because we realize that CPRB and OPS are the first step. It's not CPC. They have to come to us first in order to lodge the complaint. So we felt like they need to know what that process is. And we do understand, as we have cross-trained investigators, that we'll have more complaints, our workload will get heavier as people know how this office functions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Without any further ado, I just want to be, I just want to wrap it up here. So your OPS investigators, they are to be interacting and touching base with members of council, correct?
Correct. And it's not just our members, it's our complete staff.
Yeah, okay. But I want to make sure that they are, because you have them listed, who's assigned each ward, and I want to make sure that they are reaching out and it might be, again, as we go into the new year, maybe more so than ever before with everything that's before us, to reach out to council members again, where they can schedule, where they can come out and introduce themselves at various meetings, et cetera, here, to tell, to tell the public what they do. I think, you know, I, I've long suggested that there be a brochure put together indicating all these groups and what they do, something from the city. And, you know, I, I'm going to continue to recommend that. So we could pass a brochure, you could pass it out in the community. This is who all, who, this is who the groups are, and this is what they're responsible for. Because there's, again, I want to say, there is great confusion here. There's confusion even in the council at times as to who, who you speak to, who you go to for certain things. So, and then all the other challenges that we're confronted with, the other demands that are placed upon, especially from a budgetary standpoint. So again, as I, I'll say to you and I'll say to everybody else coming up before us, we're going to look at everybody's budget, we're going to do our due diligence, we're going to ask for information, and at the end of the day, you know, we will be passing a budget. And hopefully, that reflects your needs, but also addresses the rest of the needs that work in front of them. So on that note, again, thank you for coming to the table. Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, we're going to revert back to the Police Accountability Team, PAT, come on up.
We have that support document that Trump and the community director are going to bring together, so we'll just send it out to the office.
Good, good, Dan. Pardon? Okay. I'm going to try to knock stuff out. Dr. Anderson, welcome to the table.
Thank you, Chair.
Introduce your team.
My name is Dr. Lee Anderson, the Executive Director of the Police Accountability Team, and I'll have the rest of my team introduce themselves.
Okay, go ahead. Good afternoon, Carlos Johnson, Assistant Director of Law on the Police Accountability Team.
Hi, Martin Belet, Assistant Director of Law, also on the Police Accountability Team.
Hello, I'm Hannah Macias. I'm a performance auditor with the Police Accountability Team.
Make sure you talk loud into the microphone.
Good afternoon, I'm Nakoya Washington, the Project Manager for the Police Accountability Team.
Okay. Dr. Anderson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. So it's a pleasure to be here to speak with you all about the work of the Police Accountability Team. We have made some great strides since we've seen you last, and so we're happy to talk a little bit about what those progress are. So we're going to go over the departmental overview, our responsibilities and priorities, and then we'll end with staffing levels and vacancies. This is our team. We are, I have the dates for when everybody came in. I came November 2022, so we're coming up on two years of the Police Accountability Team since its inception.
Okay.
All right, so our objective here, we are working through our purpose. So, objective, we're going to promote justice and integrity in law enforcement by diligently implementing the consent decree's terms. We're dedicated to fostering transparency, strengthening community engagement, and providing data-driven insights to ensure accountability within the City of Cleveland. Our goal is to really build trust within law enforcement by supporting those efforts to uphold high ethical standards, ensure accountability, advocate for the rights of all community members. We're dedicated to recommending policy reforms that improve public safety while safeguarding individual liberties. Through oversight, data analysis, and collaboration with community members, stakeholders, we work to create lasting reforms and strengthen public trust, protect civil rights, and ensure fair and equitable policing for all. Our objectives, our day-to-day work, it includes continuous collaboration with the Cleveland Division of Police and other city partners, such as the CPRB, the CPC. We also work with the Department of Health and other external and internal partners. We conduct policy reviews. We have Hannah, who is our performance auditor. We're conducting audits and critical data analysis to capture results that make recommendations for the appropriate modifications for reform within the police department. We want to ensure the continued implementation of 21st century best practices and constitutional policing to the eventual termination of the consent decree with those lasting reforms. We also meet with DOJ and the monitoring team as they are assessing compliance.
Just a point of information to the viewing public, you, the PAT team was created as a result of the engagement of the Department of Justice? What brought, what created you?
It's in the consent decree.
In the consent decree?
Yes.
Okay, so the viewing public understands that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So our responsibilities, so some of those are, we conduct assessments and analyses, right? So this goes into coordinating and executing a thorough assessment of policies, practices, and training programs throughout the city for reform. We also complete performance audits. That entails internally assessing operations, programs, and processes for compliance with relevant requirements. We also make sure that we are executing comparative analyses, right? So we want to make sure that we're evaluating two or more programs or processes, and we want to make sure that we're identifying best practices and lessons learned in order to move forward. We also support continuous compliance efforts, working with internal, external stakeholders to implement reform measures outlined in the settlement agreement, and we produce advocacy documents. So we advocate for compliance upgrades to the monitoring team in the semi-annual reports. Our priorities are, first, compliance assessments. So in the eight years, I'm sorry, in the 10 years since the consent decree has been here, there are eight areas of the consent decree. Zero of the eight areas have moved into compliance. This year alone, we have three areas that have moved into compliance.
Consent decree came down what year?
2015.
Okay, so for the viewing public to understand that? Okay, go ahead.
So we have three areas, use of force, crisis intervention, and search and seizure. We are currently working with the Department of Justice and the monitoring team to determine where our priority areas will be for focused compliance and what's ready for assessment for 2025. So we're trying to move these areas through that process. We also have outreach to internal and external stakeholders. We want to emphasize the importance of community relations aimed at building trust and receiving feedback from the community and officers on the effectiveness of the reforms that have made thus far. What does the assessment of the consent decree look like? First, we start with either the creation or the reform of policies that moves us into training and implementation within the division and throughout the city. And I want to note that we always say that it's not just the Division of Police that is underneath the consent decree, it's the City of Cleveland. And so we work with the City of Cleveland. Our goal is to move the entire city and all of our partners through the consent decree that are mentioned. Then we move into audits and assessment of compliance, which is where we have those three areas. To give an update on our progress, we received our 15th semi-annual report, which covered January through June of 2024. We have 14 total upgrades and zero downgrades. So we are maintaining what the progress is and moving forward with community engagement, crisis intervention, accountability, transparency, and officer assistance. 15th semi-annual report upgrades, what we see is, we are moving areas that are in the red from non-compliance into partial compliance, operational compliance, and eventually general compliance. So these are all of the areas and the paragraphs that got upgraded. We had upgrades within community engagement. Again, those are CPC paragraphs. We work with the CPC bi-weekly to move them through their compliance upgrades. We meet bi-weekly with the CPRB and, well, with the OPS. I presented to the CPRB about their compliance upgrades, and I will be back November 12th to present an executive session to the CPRB about compliance and what that looks like. So we are working collectively with all of the partners that are mentioned in the consent decree. It's not a siloed effect, it's not just focusing on the division, it is everybody that is mentioned within the consent decree. So I want to note that CPC got upgrades, we worked with them to present evidence in our advocacy document to the monitoring team for those upgrades.
So 17B, you have partial compliance. 18A, you're still, what, in non-compliance?
It's impartial compliance.
Impartial compliance.
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, keep going.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about the compliance assessments. So use of force is one of the areas that is currently being assessed by the monitoring team.
Right.
Quarterly reviews of CDP's closed level one and level two's use of force cases, and we're assessing compliance with policies, procedures, and reform measures. This includes paragraphs 45 through 109 of the consent decree. So what we understand is that quarter three, 2024 dataset was produced to the monitoring team on October 9th. Their initial review of quarter one and quarter two of preliminary data and uses of force show that CDP uses of force are within policy. In fact, for quarter one and quarter two, only one incident was out of policy, and it was appropriately identified and handled by the chain of command. Crisis intervention, a holistic review of CDP's 2023 crisis calls for service to assess compliance with policies, procedures, and reform measures. We're looking at paragraphs 131 through 159 of the settlement agreement. We've sent off a pilot for a review of 10 cases, which has been completed, and the monitoring team is refining the questions on their assessment tool and will begin their formal assessment in the coming weeks. So we hope to move that area into sustainability rather quickly. We also have search and seizure, a holistic review of CDP's 2023 stops, arrests, and seizures to assess compliance with policies, procedures, and reform measures. These, paragraphs 160 through 175, we requested, they have requested, excuse me, the monitoring team, a dataset, and additional materials have been provided to the monitoring team to assess this area, and we will actually meet with them, I believe, on Friday to do a walkthrough, either tomorrow or Friday, excuse me, I'm not really sure about the calendar date. But it will be this week to move them through additional areas with the assessment. What does our ongoing work look like? So we have outreach, we're doing presentations to district policing committees, we're also going to roll calls, talking to officers, we're doing ride-alongs, we're also in the academy. So we have talked to the chief, and we will be in the academy. So before officers are on the street, they will learn about the Police Accountability Team and the consent decree, as well as the work that needs to be done to collect that data on all of the forms that they are assigned to complete and how that moves into compliance with the consent decree. Technical assistance awarded. So we got technical assistance from the Department of Justice to help with our community and problem-oriented policing program and recruitment and hiring. We also had legislation, which was implemented, benchmark analytics, early warning officer intervention program, and key documents that have been produced, again, our 2024 advocacy document, and our 2022 stop, search, and seizure data report, which was released. That is for paragraph 264 throughout the consent decree. That report has never been released. Our team worked with the data team within CDP to make sure that we are in compliance and starting to be in compliance with these paragraphs.
Okay. I have a question for you.
Oh, yes.
Under technical assistance.
Yes.
The recruitment and hiring, what is your role in, with that?
To the Chair, I can explain a little bit more about our role. We're basically coordinating between the subject matter experts that are assigned to the case. This is going to be a law firm or a firm called Jensen Hughes. We coordinate between them and the CDP lead for recruitment and hiring to make sure that meetings are happening, their goals and metrics are being met throughout these meetings, and that there's a plan in place in order to benefit recruitment and hiring.
Okay. Within the federal decree, within a quarter, was there, was there any specific numbers, as I'm trying to, again, with all these documents or reports, was there a specific recommendation as it pertains to staffing levels in CPC in the Cleveland Division of Police?
No, just that a staffing study be completed, but no recommendation for numbers.
Was that, was that report completed?
Yes, it was completed.
Okay, but they made no recommendations on numbers?
Not in the consent decree, no.
Okay.
To the Chair, no.
The recruitment and hiring, we had been told well over a year, maybe now, maybe approaching two years, that the administration was going to embark upon an aggressive recruitment and hiring, a plan, they were going to hire an outside contractor to do that. I know they had contracted with, I believe it was Yellow Jacket, I believe it was.
Little Jacket.
Little Jacket, yeah, little, yellow jacket. Yeah, I'm thinking of somebody, someone guy's working on the street in a yellow jacket. So Little Jacket, they met with the council president, myself, to explain some of the work that they had done. But then there, they were not retained allegedly because of the, of the cost of their contract or what their anticipated cost would be. So the, the problem that we have, we continue to have, I see Akron, I see other cities recruiting up here, and I thought we were going to have this massive recruitment plan, you know, this big PR plan to really market the Division of Police, not only talking about policing, but also the benefits, the personal benefits of becoming a police officer in the city. You can retire after 25 years of service, that the pay has been increased, that you get better, you get, you know, hospitalization, you get dental, you get prescription eyeglasses, you get the whole shebang, you get, you know, the deferred compensation, all the good things that come with being a member of the Division of Police. And because what, what I continue to see and I continue to hear is our inability to attract people to become members of the Cleveland Police Department. I hear that, I meet every week now with the safety director religiously every week, and we're, we're just, you know, we're, we're not even treading water at this point. We continue to lose officers. And 22nd of November, they are going to, we're going to have the graduation out of the academy, but I believe it's going to be somewhere under 40 or around 40. They haven't given me a number yet. But we're, you know, but we've, we've lost, we've almost lost 100, or maybe we have yet, because I haven't had the figures as of today. So we're, we're losing more than we're hiring. And so, and do you have any thoughts, any comments, or does the, does the federal monitor have any thoughts, anything, because you've been engaged with them?
Yes, to the Chair. So the Police Accountability Team recognized that difficulty.
Yes.
And what we did was, we reached out to our federal partners, and we let them know this has been an issue, a continuing issue, as the city is trying and trying, right? We need some additional assistance. So we applied for the technical assistance award, and we're actually awarded the contract with Jensen Hughes for them to assist us at no charge to the city.
That's great.
With recruitment and hiring.
Yeah.
And so through the consent decree and the Police Accountability Team, we were able to work with CDP, and now Attorney Carlos Johnson is over that project, making sure that, as we said, the meetings happen, that we are getting a return on our investment from the application.
Okay. Because that's, that's a great concern to us in council. We want to see officers hired. We want to see people in the academy. We want to see a police department that's reflective of our citizens. And so that's, I can't say enough, I'm, I am, I'm greatly concerned. In all my years here as a senior member, I've, this is the lowest that we've ever been at in the Division of Police. And that's where around the, it all depends who you talk to, but it's, some people say we're just, it's approximately 110 years that we've been this low in the division. So I'm just, I want to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to promote, to advertise, to market, to do everything we can so we can, we can meet our staffing. We allocated and we budgeted this body 181 officers this year. I want to say that again, 181. If all of these folks were to graduate between now and next year, in the, going into the first quarter next year, it's only going to be about 73 people. So think about that. That's, that's the challenges that we're confronted about. So when we talk about, and you talk about, and that ties me right in, and I'll, then let you. So when we talk about, and you talk about, and that ties me right in, and I'll, then let you continue, is community and problem-oriented policing, CPAP. To me, this is critical. It's critical. Engagement with the police officers in the street. When we had, years ago, when we had the mini-stations, when we had a dare program, we had that engagement with our kids. We were in schools, we were in the streets, we were talking to people, we had officers engage. People got to refer to officers by their first name. It became like a friendship, an engagement. We've lost all that. So what we see, most of us see today, is just police cars responding to calls for service. And that's not good. We need to have engagement. We need to be able to talk to one another. We need to have people at our, at all of our neighborhood meetings like we used to when we had the one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six officers. When I, when I was council president, that's something that Mike White and I, Mayor White and myself, we totally agreed upon, was trying to put as many people out in the street in different programs and engagement as we possibly could. And then when the new administration came in and there was a massive layoff, we've never recovered from that. So we've got these challenges. So I just, I'm, I'm, I know, because, and again, I want to say this publicly, I appreciate Dr. Anderson, your engagement with me, your willingness to come over and talk with me and, and keep me apprised of what's going on. I think that's very important that we have that kind of dialogue. So continue.
Thank you, sir. So to the chair, I also wanted to note that with recruitment and hiring, we just had a meeting this week with Department of Justice and Jensen Hughes. So things are moving forward. And because it is mentioned in the consent decree, the police accountability team is also committed to making sure that this moves from the compliance levels moves up into general compliance.
Good.
So we are working with the division to get those critical resources.
Thank you.
And with CPAP, to the chair, yes, we received technical assistance through CPAP. We have a new CPAP plan and report that has been issued. We additionally had training for the community engagement officers within CDP that happened earlier this year, Jensen Hughes, the same firm that will be helping us with recruitment and hiring. And then put that on. And we now have a dedicated CPAP coordinator and two additional CPAP coordinators that are, a CPAP leader, excuse me, and then two CPAP coordinators. And the goal is to expand that to all of the districts so that we can have this problem solving and this active problem solving with the community and the officers and business owners take place.
And I hope you would engage, or counsel within that process, all members. If someone, you know, would reach out to us, maybe sit down with us for our thoughts and suggestions and ideas is what we think. Because I, I have a dear friend of mine who's now retired. We went to high school together. He grew up in, well, we were both born in the Glenville neighborhood. And he's a deacon over at Everlasting Baptist Church, very active in the community there. But he always, we, we talk all the time. We're like brothers from a different mother. And he says the same thing, we don't talk enough about the benefits of being a police officer. Everyone thinks it's just policing. It's, you know, going out there to get the bad guy. He said, no, it's, it's a career opportunity. And his wife is a retired police officer as well. And I think, again, that's why I'm hoping you're going to engage us, because I think we just need to approach things a little differently, the way we try to recruit. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Continue.
To the chair, yes, our goal is to, to, yes, to reach out to all of the stakeholders to have effective and productive conversations about how we can move all of these areas forward. So yes, we will note that, chair.
Okay. Thank you. Continue. Anything else?
All right. This, this, sorry, I don't know where my old slide. Okay, staffing. So two thousand and twenty-four budget head council, I want to note that we are intertwined into the law department's budget, and so we do not have a separate budget. So I tried to sort of look into that, and I, that is my understanding. My understanding is that this will be the case moving into two thousand and twenty-five, which is, is, is okay. We have five that were budgeted for, it was just myself. Now we have five members. We have no vacancies and no more approved positions. But right now, we are currently working.
So you're going to be a line item in the budget for law?
Yes.
Okay.
To the chair, yes.
So, and I, I'll say this, I would hope that would be delineated somehow so we know when we're looking at the law department budget, that we know specifically where this section is. That's important, because again, we're looking at dollars, we've got issues in front of us. So I want to make sure it's clearly delineated in the, in the, the budget for law, Department of Law, as to where your folks are at, your five people. So no current vacancies and nothing, no additions for two thousand and twenty-five being proposed, correct?
To the chair, that is correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
To the chair, no.
Okay. Questions of the committee? Questions of Danny Kelly, Councilman Kelly.
Through the chair, to the team, thank you. Nice to see you all again. Good to see you have a full staff, you have alone. You mentioned about the additional assistance that is happening for Yellow, sorry, my lady, Little Jacket.
Little Jacket.
So, but what, is there something happening? Or what's, you said you, you've got some money to help that, what's going on?
They have not been retained. They weren't working, the administration had retained them, excuse me, to do marketing and outreach and what else was in their job description. But then we were informed that they did not, the administration did not continue their contract. Council president and I were briefed by them, but then that was it. So there's been no external marketing recruitment firm in place.
Well, I'm, I'm, through the chair then, and when I heard you talking about it, I thought maybe there was something that was going on after that.
Through the chair, to the council member, no, so we, we're working on the programmatic aspects of recruitment and hiring, not the marketing and advertising. We're working on the, the meat and potatoes, so to speak, that are in the consent decree.
Okay. That's all. Thank you very much. Thank you, chair.
Other questions of the committee by anyone in attendance? Yes, Councilwoman Stephanie House Jones.
Hi, good afternoon. Through the chair, to the team here, good afternoon. A couple of questions. With the search and seizure report, can you explain, knowing that this is the first one and it indicates that it is two thousand and twenty-two, what is going to be the process in getting more timelier, you know, timely information? Like, because we, we cannot utilize a report that's a year and a half old. So what, what, what are we going to do?
Through the.
Dr. Anderson?
Through the chair, to the councilwoman. We started collecting data for search and seizure in two thousand and twenty-one. So two thousand and twenty-two is the first full year of data that we have. And we also start assessing the data at the end of the quarter per the consent decree. So that's why it is, it was behind a year. Now, the additional time came into the analysis piece. We are moving into more, having more data analysis, analyst, excuse me, join the data analysis team. And one of the things that we are looking at, we are right now currently assessing two thousand and twenty-three data. So that report will be out within months.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel lady.
So just following up, so through the chair, to the team, when looking at reports, is there a standard, like a best practice or a standard as to, like, assessments? I'm just trying to figure out what should be the reasonable expectation for the public in looking at this report moving forward?
Doctor?
Through this chair, one of the things that is important to note is that the initial investigation conducted by the Department of Justice in two thousand and fourteen, they did not assess the search and seizure data. In fact, they note in the report that they did not audit the data. So we do not have a baseline. Two thousand and twenty-two is our current baseline. So we don't know if we're better or worse ten years later. So right now, this is the first set of empirical data that we have to be able to conduct analyses. And so the, the additional part to that is that we are moving forward with making sure that the data comes in. So also in addition to.
Identify yourself again for the public.
Hi, I'm Hannah Macias, performance auditor with the cat.
So pull that up right up here.
Just fill it too. Okay. Hannah Macias with Performance Auditor with the Police Accountability Team. In addition to what Dr. Anderson had said as well, we're also comparing to what other consent decree cities have reported on for their stop data. A few cities have reported on their stop data, some haven't. We are seeing that we are pretty similar in timelines for when we're getting the data out as well, although we'd love to have it be as quick as possible to report out to the public. But we want to try and make sure that we are taking the time to do the analysis that is warranted for such in-depth data set like this. This is the biggest data set that we have that we report on. It has about sixteen thousand different data points. So it takes time to actually go through the data and make sure that everything that is being reported out to the public is consistent and as clear as we can make it. But that's not to say that right now this report is the final product. We are continuously looking to make these reporting, just our process, better, cleaner, more efficient, as well as more timely.
Okay. Counsel lady?
Yes, through, through the chair, to the team. So where can you actually find this report at?
Through the chair, the report is on the city's website.
So that's why I'm on the website. That's what I'm trying to figure out. I've been going to different things just to actually find it. So where exactly is it?
We can send you a link for it, but I'll try and figure out where it is specifically placed on the website.
So this is one of the, the challenges that I would just say, just generally, right? We say stuff, like, I just did a regular random search, stop, search, and arrest. Did not come up. I'm on the Division of Police Links and Publications, can't find it here. You know, I'm just, I'm letting go to Police Oversight and Accountability. Not here. So I'm, I'm like, you see what I'm saying? So that's the one thing. This, this goes into my next question. So through, through the chair, to the team here, we have been talking about police recruitment. I know that in paragraph, is paragraph three oh seven, we are in operational compliance when it comes to reporting. Now, on our recruitment activities, then I take that to go, to actually find a report that we're supposed to report annually, where can I find the recruitment report?
For what year? Just in general?
Any year.
Okay. So the recruitment report from, from two thousand and twenty-three is part of the annual report that police had produced, and that is on their, just in general, on their website. I believe that it's under their publications, but it might be on their homepage. It's in a little bit of a separate space, I know, because I had issues accessing it. But no, I, I, I fully see your point. Absolutely.
So like, even just generally, you do a general search. Again, because these are things I'm just looking at, because I feel like it is important to come at this just as a general consumer. If you go on a website, you don't know all the things, but if you just do a search, it doesn't come up. So we have to figure out a way, while we are producing information that helps us to have a, a, a compliance when it comes to the Department of Justice, more importantly, that got to us is how are we instilling a faith from the public that there is a source of trust with the city of Cleveland and how we are doing policing? And with some of the information that you can't readily access, then I think it doesn't help our case. I will say that. It'll probably keep people however they feel. So we really need to take some steps to improve in this effort. So even in the conversations that we are consistently have at this table about recruitment, if it's readily available, then people can ask it and not have to continue to do the deep dive because it's available. Be like, hey, no, it's at this link, you can see it, it's promoted. When we have social media, again, demonstrate to people how you do it, because people learn in different ways. But if I'm having a hard time finding it, which I'm doing right here, I'm asking people explicitly, where is it? Oh, it's there. Tell me where it is. I don't find it. I can't, I don't, I don't see it. I, I just know that that is a problem, and we really need to work on that. My other question is, through the chair, to the team, we are, I know that the city is in touch with the monitoring team, talking about what will be the priorities for next year. Can you give us an idea of what those conversations have been or what, what are you thinking? Are you taking people's suggestions? Like, how does that process work?
Dr. Anderson?
So to the chair, or through the chair, to the councilwoman. We are currently looking at, for example, officer assistance and support. So training is an area that we are actively looking at. Our training has been superb throughout, and so we have gotten very good feedback from the monitoring team and the Department of Justice that this could be an area that could move forward. We are always taking suggestions. We have reached out to, to council. We want to, we talk with council, we talk with, going to the district policing communities at road calls. We talk to officers about what do they think is moving forward? What do we need to move forward on? And we take those conversations back to the Department of Justice and the monitoring team within our notes.
Okay. So through the, through, through the chair, to the team, so what have been the suggestions that have been provided from directly road call from our police, as well as things that you have heard from community relations and even some suggestions from city council?
So we haven't met with city council to go in depth about what the recommendations are. We understand that recruitment and hiring is an area, as well as the data for search and seizure. And within road calls, we've talked with, for example, officers that are crisis intervention officers, and the officers, to this point, want more information about the consent decree, which is why we are out doing road calls, why we are out doing ride-alongs. And we are working with the chief to put out a type of chief's message with, consistent with the police accountability team about what's happening. It's also why we will be embedded in the academy, at the end of the academy, so that they understand what the police accountability team is, what our goals are, and how the consent decree plays into their day-to-day activities.
Okay. And through, and through the chair, to the team, and what have been the suggestions from the public? You said you were getting, you know, going to, I think, you said from police, the city, and from the public. I think through the meetings.
The district policing committee meetings.
Yes, the district policing meetings.
Yes. So what we are doing is more conversation about the consent decree.
Okay.
Right? More information. And so that is what we're hearing, and so that is what the team is actively working on. How can we push that out?
Okay. And then a conver, so through the chair, to the team, when I attended the monitoring report at Judge Oliver's chambers, one of the things that it was a difficulty of finding out when the actual hearing is, right? So can you explain to me when the notice is? A, because I know from the federal court system, they put it on there, they put it on kind of their, I'm going to say docket thing, but you have to have a paid subscription to even get access to that. So really, can you explain how it goes? How do you all find out about when the monitoring team is going to go before, or when you all, the city, is going before Judge Oliver? How does that happen?
Through the chair, to the councilwoman, we meet with the monitoring team, and we have meetings to discuss when these hearings will work for everyone's schedule. And then those dates are proposed and given to the court via the monitoring team. The DOJ is also consulted in this process. And then we are then subsequently given a date through the monitoring team via those communications.
So can I, I'm going to ask for a request. When you all are given that date, can you let us know here in Cleveland City Council when you get the date? Through the chair, to the team.
Through the chair, to the councilwoman, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. And then finally, through the chair, to the team here, conversations again about everybody understanding what the consent decree is. A, also Cleveland City Council, at some point, having a level of deep dive understanding. At a point, we are getting, you know, wanting to terminate the consent decree, have practices here in the city of Cleveland that will go on for years to come. And I think it would be helpful if the body has a complete understanding or not, an ongoing understanding of what that looks like. And so what does it look like? Or is there plans to have a level, a deep dive session when it comes to the consent decree? With Cleveland City Council?
Through the chair, to the councilwoman, that is our hope. We delivered a letter to the city council, and we are hoping that we can be able to have some type of meeting where we talk about not only the historical aspects of the consent decree, what's currently going on, our priorities moving forward, what our strategies are. So absolutely, that is a goal of the police accountability team.
And we'll, we're going to, with our staff, we'll set that up in the process of trying to identify the dates. We're also trying to get the federal monitor in here too, which is a challenge in itself to report to us. Because I don't want to have to bring them in on a special day because the, the meter is running, if you get my drift. Okay? So we'll coordinate that. I appreciate that ongoing suggestion, so we'll coordinate that. Any other questions?
No, that's just it. Just finally, when it comes to the request that it came from the police accountability team, I think that is separate from the federal monitoring team because again, the monitoring team is there on behalf of the judge, which is also, I guess, from the Department of Justice to try to make sure that we're doing things appropriately. to try to make sure that we're doing things appropriately. The police accountability team is really our team for the city, right? The agreement is with the City of Cleveland
Yep.
and the Department of Justice. We in the City of Cleveland need to have a strong understanding separate from the monitoring team, because we are the ones that are have to live with this and how we are doing policing in the years to come. So hopefully, we can prioritize that and get this done, hopefully by January at the latest.
We will coordinate that meeting with our colleagues. Without any further ado, I just want to thank you, Dr. Anderson. I do believe, as I've said to you in our most recent meeting, I think there has been, there has been significant improvements. That's my opinion. When you look at across the board, where we were, where we are today, there's been significant improvements. Do we still have a way to go? Yes. But there has been significant improvements. I'm appreciative of your engagement, your willing to talk with me, engage me in the process. So, because I said, and I continue to say, we're here to work together. I don't see anything adversarial here. I've never criticized, as most people know, I've never criticized the federal monitor being here, because I know why they were here. Because citizens had legitimate complaints, and those complaints were not acted upon. And when it took five and six years for a citizen to have a complaint acted upon, that to me was absolutely outrageous. And I'm pro-police, everybody knows that. But what happened internally within a division of police, within the previous administrations, was absolutely, I don't even know how best to describe it. It's just, we're in this jackpot today, and it's cost us millions because of inaction, a lack of transparency, a lack of follow-up, and a lack of accountability. That's why we got ourselves in this situation. And it wasn't the cause, it wasn't the fault of city council, because again, I, as I always tell my colleagues, we don't hire, we don't fire, we don't deploy, we don't administer. That was supposed to be handled internally, and as we all know now, it wasn't handled, and that's why federal, that's why the Department of Justice came in, and that's why we have a federal monitor, which has cost us a substantial amount of money, and continues to cost us a substantial amount of money. So I appreciate the work that you and your team have done, and we'll coordinate with our staffer as it pertains to that presentation. We'll probably, we're not going to do it in a committee session, we'll probably do it in our conference room. And then anyone member from council who wants to come to that can come to that and get that update and that briefing, so.
And to the chair, if I may clarify a statement, or statements that were made previously regarding the CPC, the disciplinary files requests, and how that pertains to the commander's open vacancies?
Yeah, did you hear that?
I was here for it, thank you.
Yeah.
So if I can clarify, first, let me give a little bit of context.
Briefly?
Briefly, thank you. So the CPC, PAT, CDP, we all have, was called a work group that we have every bi-weekly.
Right.
We meet bi-weekly, and we go over records requests, and we track those records requests in a tracker, in an Excel file. With that being said, there were statements made that disciplinary files for the commander positions were outstanding.
For three commander positions.
For the three outstanding.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm sorry, not your honor, I'm used to be in a court.
That's right.
But to the chair, there was a request made for all disciplinary files for the commanders who were applying for the open positions. This request was made on March 5th of this year. Those requests, and that request was fulfilled on April 15th of this year. Now, it's my understanding that now the statement is that those disciplinary files only included three years of look back and not a full look back period.
Right, right.
So this is why I'm noting that there is a process in place. We have a formal agreement with the parties about how records requests are to be made, and those requests have been followed. There's been subsequent requests besides this made by the CPC. As recent as August, they made a different request that was already fulfilled. We have not received any subsequent requests other than that request that I just stated, the original April/March request. We have not received any addendum to that request or any type of request. We have not received any information stating that what they received was not adequate.
Because you heard co-chairperson, Mr. Adams, indicate that they made that request and they did not receive it, and my colleagues who were here at that time heard that as well.
Yes. To the chair, that is exactly what I heard as well, and that is the reason why I wanted to correct the record.
Okay. Can I have a clarifying question, clarifying point? When you say the request was meant, A, can you, through the chair to the team, can you clarify, who was the request made from, and who was the request sent to?
To the councilwoman, through the chair, the request is made from the executive, interim executive director. And that request is then made to CDP as well as the PAT, because we are also keeping track of all requests. That's part of our, our part in this process. So we received that request, and we kept track of that request. We met bi-weekly with the CPC. It was never mentioned again that there was an issue with those, won't they receive?
Right, so I'm just, I just want to get a clarification, as you're talking about in this public domain. Through the chair to the team, you are indicating that the request was made from the interim executive director. Was the request fulfilled via, through the interim executive director?
To the councilwoman, through the chair, the process that we have is that requests are made to CDP, PAT. CDP then sends those documents or data to law. Then law reviews that, and then they upload that, those documents or that data to a SharePoint site that is accessible to all of the CPC members.
Okay, so it's on the SharePoint side?
Correct.
Okay. So again, because I think it's very, when we say we, and we, I think we need to be a little bit more explicit on how the request came in and how was the request fulfilled. So for the committee, I think there should be just a follow-up of understanding from the CPC of what, who actually went into the SharePoint drive to look at the fulfilling of the requests.
Okay, so what I would ask to get some clarification, because we go back and forth on this. What I would like for you to direct a piece of correspondence to the CPC indicating and copy those of us on the Safety Committee, indicating that you have not received any additional requests. Because they are here, they are on, they're on public record saying they made requests and they haven't received those. And what we're saying on this side of the table, we're in for transparency.
And to the chair, just to be further transparent enough, to further clarify, there's distinct requests that need to be, you have to differentiate the distinct requests. There's a, there were requests for commander disciplinary files, and then there's an outstanding request, though they said there's 27, there was 28 total requests, 27 have been completed, there's one outstanding. The one outstanding request is for full disciplinary files for all CDP person, officers who had been disciplined within a certain period of time. That request is the one that is outstanding. However, as I stated before, we have these bi-weekly meetings with the CPC. We are working with CDP in order to produce those, that request, and we actually have been given persistent timetables on the process for those requests, and that has been reiterated also to the CPC as well.
So on the three commanders, again, you have not received any additional requests on those three commanders?
To the chair, correct.
Okay, that's all I need to know. That's all we need to know, because we heard something differently at the table this morning.
And I would just, so I'm gonna just, again, this is part of the problem, right? Is that people have come, and specifically when it's come to the CPC, they will come in front of council and say certain themes that are not the full truth, which has led to a lot of unnecessary division and divisiveness, and it is, it is, it will be a breath of fresh air to get community members to understand the real charge and responsibility. It just really will be. And hopefully, a new executive director as well. And I, I mean, it's been problematic, and I, this is coming from Stephanie, Stephanie House Jones, based on my experience, because this is what happens, is people will sit up here, throw stuff out that is misleading, or just flat out not true. And it is really, really frustrating.
Yeah.
Really, really frustrating.
So it's, and, you know, to only reinforce that, we don't take, we don't, we don't ask anyone at this table, we don't swear on anybody at this table. We don't do that. We have never done that historically unless we subpoena people. If we subpoena people, then we'll, then it's a different story. But I'd hate to have to think that we would have to take a, force an oath at the table, nothing but the truth and the whole truth at this table. I would hate to have to ever do that. We expect when people come to this table, I've often said this, we all like good news, but as long as it's the honest news and the straight news, we can deal with it. We, this body can deal with it. All we want, we want honest, we want honesty. Just be honest with us. That's what's important. And so I find now, you know, your, Mr. Assistant Law Director, you know, your statement, I find it very troubling. They would sit here and tell us that, that, you know, they have been denied and not received the information they requested. That's, that's not a good way to do business, and maybe it's with the, with, let me see, with six of them rolling off the board. Yeah. I think it's six rolling off their board.
It's people who have extended four years, they're coming up. It's a significant amount of time. Majority of people are coming off.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So they're coming up, there's, I think, four, I might, go through, I think four had requested to stay on, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping the mayor takes into strong consideration, because I'll be very blunt, I, this is what I've said to the safety director, and I think maybe I've said it to you as well. I'm hoping the mayor takes his time and his due diligence, and really appoints people to the CPC, first of all, who are rational, who are committed to the City of Cleveland and our residents, and who can get along. Because what we have witnessed, all of us, what has transpired at that CPC is absolutely embarrassing. It's embarrassing, and they have done nothing but to cause disruption and create an environment where people have no faith in them. That's the problem. We should have faith in the CPC, and people don't have faith in them, because they can't get along together. When you have to have police officers at their meetings to keep them, to keep themselves apart from one another, that tells you a whole lot of what's going on. So I'm leaving at that point. Again, I want to say, Dr. Anderson, thank you, as always. We'll coordinate with our staffer as it pertains to that presentation that's been requested. And again, we continue our working relationship. Thank you. Thank you.
Chair, thank you.
Okay. Okay, our last one up. It's been a long day, gang. I appreciate those of you who stuck it out. Okay, PIO, YYA. I love that. I love that one. Okay, come to the table. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Office of Prevention, Intervention and Opportunities is before us. This is our last section to review. I hope, I know some members have had a lead for other meetings. But I am, I'm here, okay? With my colleagues to wrap this one up. So Chief, would you identify yourself and your team?
Good afternoon to the chair. I am Chief Sania Pryor-Jones over Youth and Family Success and the Mayor's Office of Prevention, Intervention and Opportunity. At the table, I'm going to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves.
I'm Sherri Ellery, Assistant Director for PIO.
Samantha Holmes, Program Manager for Youth and Family Success.
Hi, I'm Catherine Hall, Chair of the Black Women and Girls Commission.
Good afternoon, I'm Eugenia Cash, the Director of Social Support Specialist Unit.
Good afternoon, Renetta Robinson, one of the supervisors in the Social Support Services Unit.
Okay. Chief?
Thank you, Chair. I also like to acknowledge our team behind us, our social support specialists who are here with us in the audience, and we also have some of our partners here in the audience as well.
Okay. Proceed.
Thank you.
Where is the clicker?
Okay, thank you. And so, I'll do it. Thank you. And so for the purposes of today, we're going to spend some time talking a little bit about the context of our work, talk about our purpose around mission and strategies, what our priorities and accomplishments were in '24, and then our priorities for 2025. And so first, around the issue of context, the topic of violence is a very difficult topic, is one in which we know our council members and all of our staff here at City Hall is paying attention to and taking a part of the city's all-of-government approach. I think it's important that we remind people, when we are trying to address violence, we are addressing different levels of violence and have different strategies. And so this first slide is just a reminder of that. Violence has three primary levels. You have your primary level, which is really focused on upstream kinds of actions and activities. How do we support people, particularly our youth, before they ever get involved in violence? So that's things like high-quality out-of-school time programs, employment opportunities, things that keep our kids safe. Secondary prevention is really focused on some of the areas of violence that really are about doing the good work to prevent risk, particularly for high-risk individuals and deterrents. I think you all heard a lot about that from our colleagues in CRB earlier, some of the work that they do in youth diversion would be an example. And then crisis intervention will also be included. A lot of that's done by colleagues here, like our social support specialists and our partners at Murdis Taylor. And then the tertiary level of violence, that really is, violence is already occurring in community. And so who are the people who can come in, like the violence interrupters, our victim services providers, and stop the violence from continuing to spread? We also look at the two ecosystem approaches to violence prevention, which is also important. At the macro level, it really is about the graphic to the left. If you have quality, healthy communities, where you have healthy assets, like just social justice systems, high-quality schools, access to healthcare, including mental health, you will find less violence occurring in neighborhoods and across cities. The other graphic here is the CVI ecosystem approach. We learned a lot more about this on September 10th, when we were able to host a violence prevention training conference, thanks to Councilman Starr, who attended that conference, and of course, Council President, who came and provided some remarks. But what we learned about this is that there are 11 main indicators and factors in a healthy CVI ecosystem, and then includes everything from reentry, victim services, community outreach, wraparound services, school-based prevention programs, life coaching, youth diversion, as well as preventative youth development. If you think about the work of some of our partners across the community, several of them pop up. PIO primarily works in the space of community outreach, wraparound services, and preventive youth development. But we also know we have our partners who are working at the school district, several of them funded by the Neighborhood Safety Fund, and through some of the contracts that CRB is working on. You have organizations like Brenda Glass that are doing the victim services work. And then Cuyahoga County is actually the lead agency in our community around reentry services. So we just wanted to set that context, because as you can see from these graphics, it takes a lot of different specialties, as well as leaders, to be working against this issue of violence that is in our community. And these things are complementary, not competitive. And so we just wanted to make sure we set the stage for that. So specific work being done in PIO. When you look at our mission statement, the mission of the Mayor's Office of Prevention, Intervention and Opportunity is to address the root causes of trauma and violence. We do this through a human development framework and broad-based efforts that improve the overall well-being and quality of life outcomes for children, youth, and their families. Our main areas of work continue to be in the employment and expanded program space, social support services, trauma-informed spaces like our rec centers, overall violence prevention strategy, and what we've also added is the systems-level development and coordination work. This is work that we don't have specific programs around, but we are facilitating and stewarding the processes in order to make that happen. Our staffing model is here for you. We have 22 staff members in the PIO office. This office is reflective of our demographics here at the City of Cleveland, and half of our staff members are actually City of Cleveland residents. So they come to work to do their work as professionals, but they also have a very specific community lens, as they are living across the city and all of your neighborhoods. We also just want to highlight for you that we actually have two vacancies in our social support specialist unit, based on two people recently taking new opportunities. We also are continuing to hold one of those spaces for someone who is on military leave. We're required to do that by law. And then most recently, we have a temp helping as the administrative assistant, because we had a recent transfer to another department at the city. But this is our current staffing model. And I just want to say, this work does not happen without a strong staff. The leadership team that you see before you, they work very hard to make sure that the metrics that we're going to go over are accomplished, and they are always going above and beyond for the city of Cleveland. And so this first metric is focused on the trauma-informed care work. Our desire is to increase the number of professional development sessions for trauma-informed care and healing recovery. So far, we have done 38 of those and hit our metrics for 2024. On the social support services side, we wanted to increase the number of patrons that were supported by our social support specialists, and also not just do it from the perspective of quali, I mean quantity, but quality. And so we've done a couple of things to support this metric. One of the ones that we're very excited about is Akovia. The team has been able to establish Akovia. So you'll hear more about that system and how that case management system allows us to do more targeted, ongoing support with our residents when they come in for our help. Under employment and expanded programs for employment, with the same resources, we were able to ensure 400 young people were employed throughout the course of the summer and some of our extended-year programming. Sherri will speak more about that later. And we also were able to start and establish a new young adult workforce training program. As we look at the statistics that are telling us that most of the people engaged in the violence are young men, 18 to 33 years old, so we're putting some focus around that. We also worked in partnership with YOU and Cuyahoga County to extend the summer work experience for young students who graduated from CMSD primarily and did not have a post-secondary plan, because we know that that gap between leaving high school and doing your next thing can be a really hard place, and we wanted to make sure people had that opportunity. Under expanded programs, 36 programs across the rec centers, year three of the Hoops After Dark pilot, and then doing a lot more at the systems level around provider engagement. Now I'm going to turn things over to Sherri to speak more about the trauma-informed care initiative.
It has been our goal to transform the neighborhood resource and recreation centers into trauma-informed neighborhood resource and recreation centers. We want every staff member to be sensitive to the traumas in our families' lives that they may be experiencing, and respond to them in a trauma-informed way that promotes healing and doesn't re-traumatize them. Through our contract with Case Western Reserve University, we are providing professional development to our managers and the social support services unit, we'll refer to it as S3 unit. These sessions are focused on how our brain organizes around trauma, changes trauma makes to the brain, and a co-healing model, all focused on teaching managers and specialists how to mitigate the impact of trauma. In addition, the staff from Case Western Reserve University has been working with the Neighborhood Resource and Recreation Center managers and leadership team to implement standards and a progress monitoring tool used to assess the implementation of those standards. Through our partnership with Kent State University, we are providing training to our center managers and recreation staff on the Certified Park and Recreation Professional Certification. This is the national standard for all parks and recreation professionals who want to be at the forefront of their profession. Training is currently ending, and participants will be given the opportunity to take the certification exam in the next month or so. The Social Support Services Unit has identified a software program to assist with their case management of services provided to patrons in our neighborhood resource and recreation centers. This software program enables us to accurately track services provided and facilitate follow-up services while maintaining HIPAA requirements. In addition to the professional development on trauma-informed care that the specialists participate in along with the, alongside the managers, our S3 unit also participated in sessions from other providers that helped them enhance their emergency care skills, identify protocols for active shooter situations, and thanks to our partnership with CRB, our S3 team earned certificates from Project Lift's trauma-focused violence reduction training. And with that, I will turn this over to Director Cash to discuss the S3 unit.
So in essence, the creation of the Social Support Services Unit is the city of Cleveland's demonstration of a long-term commitment to our residents, working to create safe spaces in our neighborhood recreation centers where our families can access free resources and doable supportive services. The social service, social support service specialists serve as advocates, navigators, and community monitors to help to support our community. As you can see, our social support specialists met with 769 individuals ages 18 and under. Many of these individuals had multiple contacts with our specialists, for over 2,224 contacts. Our specialists met with 329 patrons ages 19 to 59 with multiple contacts, totaling 559. We met with over 112 seniors, for a total of over 183 contacts. Our total of 1,213 individuals had 2,969 total contacts with our social support service specialists. Depending on the seriousness of, or the issues or concerns that were addressed or discussed, our contacts may have become long in duration, because we wanted to ensure that their issues, concerns were met or addressed. We are seeing more serious issues being presented in our current climate, and as we all know, our climate drives our culture and what we're having to deal with. So we are finding that our support specialists are dealing with a multitude of issues and concerns resolving our citizens here in Cleveland. We respond to crises in our schools, all schools, parochial as well as charter schools, but the services and the needs are great, and we work with our different community partners, as well as different partners within the city, to address those issues and concerns. So I will turn it over to Renetta Robinson, our social support specialist, who will help explain our data. Also keeping in mind that data is a person, and that is very critical when we look at numbers.
So this slide demonstrates the various kinds of supports and services many residents seek when contact is made with, with a specialist. Most of our contacts were for mentoring, which are often youth seeking guidance, advice, and/or support. Examples of this will include the mental health check-ins that occur at Fairfax Recreation Center led by a specialist, resulting from the death of a member of the boxing team there who died by suicide a few years ago. Initially, the check-ins were created to provide support to the team members, friends, and families, for them to learn more about suicide and suicide prevention. Heading now into third year, the check-ins are held once a month throughout the year as an opportunity for youth in that community to learn about mental health, meditation, mindfulness, and healthy ways to cope with or overcome challenges. Another example would be the girls group that were held at RG Jones School, led by a specialist with the support of the Say Yes Family Specialist, creating an effort to reduce the conflict amongst the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade girls at that school by creating or restoring healthy relationships. As a result, according to the family support specialist, it has resulted in positive, it has, she has reported, a positive impact evident by improved positive relationships with students in the building. As you can see, our second-largest category of services is emotional support. As you can well imagine, many of our residents who may be struggling with poverty are also struggling with depression, anxiety, and apprehension about the future. These contacts are often with individuals who generally are seeking support when faced with challenges and circumstances that disrupt their emotional regulations. Examples include a specialist helping a youth process feelings or emotions of having to transfer schools by helping them identify strategies for a successful transition to a new school. Another example would be a specialist building reassurance, trust, and patience with a senior woman who was apprehensive about having to move out of her home into a new home. The third-largest category so far this year is other. I would like to know that other may be fluid from year to year, or month to month, or year to year, based on the experience of the community at any given point in time. So for example, earlier this year, more intense support was provided for residents of a refugee center based on their needs at the time. And then the launch of the civic rec revealed that residents in the city of Cleveland needed accessibility to tech and/or support with tech literacy. Our specialists help residents schedule appointments, whether it's for medical, public entitlement benefits, behavioral health, et cetera, connect them to community resources, assist with completion of benefits packages. And in collaboration with the city CRB and diversion program, we also help families of youth who are being released from facilities, just to name a few. In addition to the direct contacts, our specialists are also very engaged with community members, like, again, the Say Yes Family Support Specialist, CMSD public schools, local charter and parochial schools, mental and behavioral health agencies, and a host of other organizations in the community. We spend a great deal of time forging relationships with outside partners, so that when we do make referrals, we're able to do so with warm handoffs, and not just provide the name and number to a resource. We do not want our community members to be further traumatized by telephone trees and additional handoffs. And with that, I will pass it to Sania.
Thank you. In keeping with our mission, we have partnered with Youth Opportunities Unlimited to provide our youth ages 14 to 18 with meaningful summer employment opportunities that support improvements in learning outcomes and social, emotional development. And our representative from YOU is here with us today, Eric Dillenbeck. Youth do not just get a job, but are provided job coaches and mentors who help them learn the soft skills that employers value. Youth are provided mentoring and after-the-work experience as well. We want to prepare our youth to compete in a 21st century global economy. As part of the employment program, we included lifeguard training, and we're pleased to support our recreation by paying stipends to youth to take the classes leading to lifeguard certification. Youth could earn up to $540 in a stipend for taking the certification classes. Thirty-four youth participated in the training, 28 were certified, and 21 were hired by the city. We also supported a marketing academy, and in this academy, 10 youth were certified in marketing and certified in coding. They developed plans for improving communications through social media and print media, and presented them to leadership. As we wrapped up the summer employment opportunities, a searing need surfaced. We had a group of youth who graduated from high school but did not have any post-secondary plans, no job, no technical training classes, no college plans. In partnership with the county, we added an extended employment program that allowed them to work an additional 30 hours per week for six extra weeks. 67 of the 150 youth in this program were funded through the city. We also wanted to support our youth as young as 10 with opportunities to begin learning about what it means to have employment, emphasizing, again, those soft skills, and allowing them to earn a little extra pocket money. So in addition to the YOU summer employment program, we also offered two-stipend-based community service programs during the summer, making our own space for ages 12 and up, and the Next Gen Leadership for youth ages 10 to 14. Youth involved in the Next Gen Leadership Community Service Project engaged in developing the Ideal Community Vision Board, participated in structured activities, and collaborated with their peers to complete projects. These programs were offered at two sites. The Cleveland Freedom Project was also a stipend-based program that allowed 14- to 19-year-olds the opportunity to explore careers in public safety. They received $1,000 stipend to, for completing this program. Under the category of coming soon, we are implementing, implementing a new program for young adults through Towards Employment. This program will provide two weeks of paid career readiness training, and then four weeks of guided employment. And then the counselors will continue to work with them for up to a year to help them find full-time employment that provides a living wage. Our expanded programs focus on six key areas listed here, and I'll talk more about that in an upcoming slide. Based on those categories we just discussed, this year we were able to provide 400 youth the opportunity to earn either wages or a stipend while learning valuable skills that will help them succeed in the workforce. As you can see from this slide, we have slowly increased our YOU employment participation numbers since the pandemic, and this year we exceeded our pre-pandemic numbers. The only thing holding us back from even higher numbers is funding. This year, YOU had 5,507 applications for, from Cleveland youth for 1,211 jobs.
So re, re.
This year, 5,507 applications from Cleveland youth for 1,211 jobs, and we funded 248 of those jobs in 2024.
And you funded 228?
248.
248 funded.
From the 2111?
That was part of the 1211.
The rest is funded by the county.
And the city funded the 248?
The city funded the 248, the county funded the, the rest of that 1,211.
Okay, got you. Good, thank you.
The 1,211 jobs that were funded by both the county and the city were held by youth in each of the 17 wards, and you can see up here exactly how many youth in each ward were, were employed. This next slide demonstrates the growth across all the, the employment opportunities that were offered. And you can see that we're, we're growing it each year. I talked about making our own space as one of the stipend-based programs for youth ages 12 and up. These youth could earn up to $100 per week for the three-week program. The youth from Michael Zone and Alexander Hamilton started out with some fun activities to emphasize some engineering principles that I don't understand, but I'm sure Councilwoman House Jones would. They were given six, six-foot boards, and they competed to see who could construct the highest tower. And after this, they brainstormed things that they would like to build to enhance the experience at their center. The youth worked with an engineer and an architect as they built benches and swings for the centers. And if you drive by Hamilton Center, you'll notice that they also painted the bollards a bright yellow to draw attention to the center, because many of them expressed the feeling that people don't know that it's open, because it's just not, doesn't jump out at you. The expanded programs, while most of our programming is in the area of education, we strive to have interactive explorative programs. In education, we have STEM and STEAM programs provided by Cleveland Botanical Gardens, Shaker Lakes, and Greater Cleveland Neighborhood Centers Association. Virtually, we provided Tri-C's Aspire GED program. We offered reading boost for elementary and middle school youth, and ACT/SAT tutoring programs for our high school students. After-school All-Stars is kind of hard to put into one category, because they really do it all, tutoring, games, sports, reading, and field trips. Reach Success is, is a virtual tutoring program, connecting with the students and their families. And in June, all 25 of the students that participated in Reach Success were promoted to the next grade, and 78% of them opted to continue during the summer. Youth Leadership Development Mentorships and Community Service includes our highly-successful Exploring Entrepreneurship program. Youth participating in this program also participate in a variety of pop-up workshops that are similar to Shark Tank. Our Job and Career Readiness Program provides instruction in medical billing and coding and phlebotomy. Just this summer alone, six out of eight of our medical billing and coding students were employed, and 13 of our 15 phlebotomy students were employed upon successfully completing the programs. Under Health and Wellness, we have Healthy Cooking Class. Under Health and Wellness, we have healthy cooking classes that focus on seasonal foods and circuit training exercise classes. The arts category includes our music lessons, dance, photography, and visual arts programs. And during the summer, Carumou House and Cleveland Public Theater both offered robust programs that resulted in performances. While Recreation provides the majority of sports activities in our centers, we do provide a couple of programs that are outside Recreation's normal offerings. Soccer is one of the programs we offer, and Recess Cleveland provides our youth the opportunity to participate in organized supervised games, subliminally teaching them the importance of taking turns, sharing, collaborating, and conflict management. This summer, we also provided support to Advantage Cleveland Tennis and Education for the tennis classes provided at Thurgood Marshall. There are more that I could share, but in the interest of time, I think you can see that we're trying our best to fill that gap between after-school and heading home. We know that violent crimes by youth ages seven to 17 occur most frequently in those hours immediately following the close of school on school days. Every child that is participating in a program in a neighborhood, resource, and recreation center is one less child that is bored on the streets, tempted by activities that can get them into trouble. The next slide shows the number of patrons, mostly youth, who have attended at least one class during the season. We're working to create a culture where the youth participate in these activities on a more consistent basis. Our struggle is that some of our youth may attend a program once, really like it, but for a variety of reasons like transportation, family obligations, or other conflicting activities, they don't make it back. Since the centers are traditionally a more social atmosphere, without guidance, the youth may not identify beneficial programs. Our Social Support Service Specialists here in the audience have been a key asset in increasing the numbers in our programs. As they build relationships with the youth in the building, they are steering them to programs. As you know, having a relationship with a caring adult is the number-one building block to helping young people with self-control, identifying plans for their future, developing values, and an overall broader worldview. One of our programs came out of a meeting that the mayor had with a group of young people. They were asking for esports programming. And since that request, we've put esports in five of our centers, Stella Walsh, Frederick Douglass, Kovasik, Estebrook, and Cadell. And over the year, we've had 352 youth engaged in esports activities. On August 2nd, we had a culminating competition at Frederick Douglass, and as you can see, Estebrook and Frederick Douglass were the big winners of the day. At this point, I will transition over to Samantha Holmes, who will share with you additional young adult programming.
Thank you, Sheri. I will be speaking more about our expanded programming that supports young adult men ages 18 to 26, Hoops After Dark. In collaboration with Recreation and the Cleveland Cavaliers, this eight-week summer program not only promotes physical activity through basketball, but also prioritizes the personal development through workshops of its participants. In the chart display, you will see that in the third year of the pilot program, league participation has increased to 123 players. Hoops After Dark is unique in its approach. Each player is required to engage in personal development workshops before every league game. These workshops cover vital topics such as financial literacy, career development, and gun violence prevention, equipping our young men with essential life skills that extend far beyond the basketball court. Additionally, participants are connected to community resources that support social and physical health in a supportive environment. This holistic approach fosters not only better athletes, but also well-rounded individuals who are prepared to face the challenges of adulthood. One of the program's signature events is the Job and Resource Fair. This event is done in partnership with our Human Resources Team and Ohio Means Jobs. This fair serves as a crucial platform, bringing together organizations dedicated to hiring young adults and providing access to valuable resources. It is a direct investment in our young adults, helping them to secure employment and develop the skills necessary for a successful future. Through the collaborative coordination of Hoops After Dark, we are not just promoting sports, we are investing in the future of our community. We are giving our young men the tools they need to succeed and thrive, ultimately contributing to a safer and more vibrant Cleveland. Next, Chief Prior Jones will speak about our collaborative work through systems-level coordination.
Thank you, Sam. And so one of the other things we wanted to make sure we elevated to you this year was really around the systems-level coordination work that we've been doing. PIO stewards a number of these efforts, and these are really important for the long-term improvements that we want to see around the quality of life for youth and young adults across the city. What we know from research is that when organizations are coordinating efforts and services around a clear vision for common results, you will see the kind of beneficial improvements in the lives of those people. And so we just wanted to highlight a few here. The first one is Cleveland Thrive. As you all know, the Department of Justice, we received a grant for their CBI PI initiative that was available to us. And this has turned into the city's first violence prevention network of over 100 partners. These partners meet bi-weekly, they share information, they also do collective learning with one another. Through this same grant, the city was able to host the very first Violence Prevention Training Conference in partnership with Live Free USA. This conference trained over 140 violence prevention organizations self-identified in the city of Cleveland, and also supported another 150 people who watched the main sessions online. The other highlight here in the violence prevention work for Cleveland Thrive is our blueprint. We have been working in partnership with a number of council members as well to really focus on how does Cleveland put together a current violence prevention plan? And thanks to this Department of Justice grant, we are able to produce a blueprint. We most recently awarded a consultant team who is going to be developing this blueprint and being in touch with all of you as they engage with residents across the city. And we're really excited that that work is going to be finally underway as one of our deliverables for the grant. And so this grant had three deliverables. One is the development of this blueprint. The other is training in violence prevention. And the last is re-granting dollars that can support some best-in-next practices. And so we have hit two of those three deliverables. The next systems-level initiative I want to focus on is Summer Soundtrack. This was all focused on coordinating summer programming for youth. As you know, the summertime is a time where violence tends to increase across communities, and we wanted to make sure that our young people were engaged in as many positive opportunities as possible. We know we can't do that alone here at the city of Cleveland through Recreation or any other department. We're in a city where we have about 60,000 school-age youth, and so what more can we do? And our best approach was to coordinate and collaborate. We did this in partnership with the school district, our public library system, Starting Point, Case Western Reserve University, RTA, and a number of other partners. And our focus was to close the ESER gap. If you all recall, CMSD no longer has ESER funding. And so over the last four years, they have been providing a very robust summer program for young people. They no longer had the funding for that, and they were going to focus on specific grades around academics. In partnership with these partners, we were able to close that gap. That ESER-funded program looked to support about 7,000 people in coordination alone. We were able to ensure that there were over 11,000 quality experiences for our young people that they actually took advantage of. And so we know that coordination works. The other is the Cabinet for Children and Youth. This is really focused on something that we've come to council for in the past, and that is, how do we do a better job coming up with a common set of outcomes for our young people in our community? We know the overall health and well-being for young people doesn't happen from a scattershot approach. And so if we're able, similarly to what we've done with Summer Soundtrack, to do that with all of the developmental goals that we have for young people, we believe that we can see very successful results, like many of our sister cities across the country. And so we have launched this effort. So far, we have done this through engagement with departments across City Hall that we know touch young people, zero through 24. And we're looking forward to coming to engage with our council members, to talk more about this work, and to engage you with your input. And we were also able to complete a cost model analysis around those ESER funds, which led us to the Summer Soundtrack work. And then we know, in partnership with some of our philanthropic partners outside of City Hall, there's a significant gap in out-of-school time funding. So what more can we do to organize out-of-school time providers so that they can be able to collectively advocate for additional resources beyond the city of Cleveland? And I just want to thank Councilwoman House Jones for engaging with that advocacy group and attending some of those preliminary meetings. I'm going to turn it back over to Samantha to talk more specifically about the Summer Soundtrack as one of our highlights.
And so as Chief mentioned, the Summer Soundtrack was really heavily around coordination. But as we coordinated our partners, this dashboard really helps us to understand what that deep coordination looks like. And so Chief mentioned that we were able, when we look at quality summer experiences through this coordinated effort, have over 11,000. Of the 11,000, I want to break that down a little bit. And so when we look at that 6,500, that is where, as partners, we were able to come together and look at unique participation. So partners being able to share data as around students to be able to know that we were uniquely touching scholars. And when we look at city of Cleveland programming, we were over 2,600, which included PIO programming, which Sheri spoke extensively about, but then also Recreation programming. Included in that was CMSD's Summer Learning Experience, Y O U's programming, which was also elevated through Summer Employment, but also another community partner, Case Western Reserve University, which brings us to that a little over 6,500. The number that is on the screen to your right, the 4846, looks at additional youth that were served that are not necessarily unduplicated. However, when we look at the two partners that shared data with us, Cleveland Public Library and Starting Point, when we look at the numbers from Starting Point, that helps us to understand, we look at the structure of their programming, most likely those scholars at 770 would not be duplicated as a part of that number, because their programming existed during the same timing as the traditional programming that Recreation or CMSD. And so just the type of programming would add on to that 6,500. When we look at unduplicated, we're closer to that 7,000, over that 7,000 number. Another thing that this dashboard helped us to really understand through coordination was also around the impact of this work. And so some of the things that I really want to share is, one, we look at city of Cleveland programming, over 609 youth attended more than 11 days of programming throughout the summer. From CMSD, when they shared their impact data, 420 students recovered, 368 credits, which most of those scholars earned a half a credit to a full credit. And then last partner I would like to share is Cleveland Public Library. They shared 143 families with children ages zero through five were served through special kindergarten readiness programs. And so beyond just understanding that coordination, we were really able to do a deeper dive and understand more about the impact of the data as well. I will turn it back over to Chief to talk about our priorities.
Thank you, Sam. We also wanted to make sure that we took time to talk about where we are with the ARPA-funded initiatives that the PIO office also stewards on behalf of the city. These efforts are administered through PIO, thanks to council partnership and the ARPA dollars that became available to the city of Cleveland, and there are two. The first one is our Family Scholarship and Employee Retention Program that we do in partnership with Starting Point. This particular program has been a significant contribution to the childcare crisis that is being talked about in our community. We know for a fact that our ability to provide scholarships to families when we did, as well as retention's bonus pay to employees when we did, has allowed for many of our centers in the city of Cleveland to remain open, and many of our families to be able to go to work and go to school. And so just as a few fast facts here, you'll see that the scholarship program has served over 200 families with over 300 children being supported. We had 84 childcare programs enrolled in the scholarship program to make that possible out of their center. And then half a million dollars has been distributed to Cleveland residents who are part of the early childhood workforce. And these are predominantly Black and Brown women in our communities that are leading their families, and oftentimes the breadwinner. In terms of the other ARPA-funded initiative in partnership with council, we thank you again for establishing the Neighborhood Safety Fund. You all know the background of that particular fund, but we just wanted to highlight, in an effort to help reduce violence over the summer, when again, we know it's at its highest peak, we were able to, in partnership with the Cleveland Foundation and our Neighborhood Safety Fund Committee, which we have two of those three members who are at the table. So thank you, Councilwoman Kelly and Councilwoman House Jones, to get out $1 million in funding to 14 different organizations. The committee has also started site visits, getting to know more deeply who these organizations are, and overall got out 43 grants to organizations to help curb violence in our city. So just wanted to also give you a little bit of that background. Last but not least, we wanted to share with you what we're looking ahead to in 2025, where our priorities are, which really focus around what you see from the staff here, who make up our staffing model, and those core areas of work that we're working in. As far as the Neighborhood Resource and Recreation Centers, we are very excited that Recreation has hired a new director, and so we are looking forward to working with her and her team, continuing to support them around trauma-informed care and healing professional development. As far as our Social Support Services Unit, this unit primarily works outside of our recreation centers, but they are also working in crisis situations in our schools, and they are also working in other third spaces like our public libraries. We want to go and provide these resident services where residents are when we are able. And so they are continuing to grow their partnerships and deepen coordination efforts, as well as to do more tracking of data so that they can provide the appropriate case management support for residents as they need it. As far as expanded programs and youth employment is concerned, Sheri said it best, there is a significant desire in our city for young people to work. They apply. We all just have to figure out collectively, and PIO is in this with you and our other partners, to ensure that more young people can be employed during the summer. And so we're continuing to do that work, as well as doing more around marketing and promotion of all of the opportunities that we have available. I just want to also, as a sidebar mention, yesterday, we had an amazing experience over at Cleveland Browns Stadium with our annual youth summit. This is the second year that we've hosted this summit, and we had about 200 high school-age students from across schools in the city of Cleveland. CMSD, parochial, charter school students were in participation. And as those young people really dug into the opportunity for the day, we also were able to share with them a number of the things that we have available at the city. A couple of things came up. One, they really felt good that the city was investing in them. And in fact, I'm pretty sure there's a social media post already out there with a young lady who talked about that. She felt invested in. And then we also found out that a lot of our young people don't know all that the city does, or all that we have to offer to them. And so we know we all have a lot more work to do in terms of marketing and promoting our efforts. The last thing I'll mention as far as our 2025 priorities are concerned is the systems-level transformation work. We know that we are on track to deliver all of the requirements from our Department of Justice grant, and to work with our partners to figure out long-term where this network of 100 partners through Cleveland Thrive will live and best support our community with CBI approaches to violence prevention. And then we know it's truly important for us to do more around organizing the coordination of efforts when it comes to a common agenda and set of accountability for all of our youth development outcomes. So we thank you for taking the time to hear from us today, and of course, we always appreciate when you all come out and partner with us, and we look forward to continuing to partner with you in 2025.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Chief, excuse me.
Thank you.
And to my colleagues who have been great And to my colleagues who have been gracious to be here through this whole process. I'm going to start with a line of questionings and not only requests, but also so our staff is aware of the request. We all know that this whole section was basically developed to deal with the growing problems of violence and youth-related issues in the city of Cleveland, so I'm going to jump right into it. The budget, where are you with regard to your budget at this time?
To the Chair, is your question about our current budget spending?
Yes, current budget.
Our current budget. I'll turn it over to Assistant Director Ellery.
To the Chair, we are on track in all of the areas of the budget to spend down our funded.
Is there any sections that have been, that you've exceeded?
Not at this point, no.
Not at this point, okay. Okay. So I do appreciate, and I would, I'm glad to see, when you indicated 50% of your staff is Cleveland residents, I would like other sections and divisions and departments to do likewise, and that's very helpful for us to understand who is at our table. So let me go into some other issues here. Let me go work down here. Okay. Most of the programs, I'm trying to understand, we understand the outside groups that have been retained to do work out in the neighborhood, but the internal work, what I would call the interdepartmental of staff members, primarily, do they work out, do they work out of the rec centers or where?
To the Chair, the PIO, and I think what I'll do is go back to our work chart that might be helpful to all of us.
Yes.
So let's do that. We were excited about everything we're doing, so we had a lot of slides for you today.
You ain't kidding.
So, but it's good work. It's good work on behalf of the people of Cleveland. And so when you look at our staffing model, you will see the Social Support Services Unit Director, that is Eugenia Cash, who is sitting to my left.
Yes.
And underneath her are supervisors and social support specialists. The social support specialists, some of them in the audience behind us, they are the ones that work out in community. And so they are primarily housed at neighborhood resource and recreation centers. They have a schedule for each of the centers. And then some of them are also housed in other third spaces like Cleveland Public Library.
Okay. So if you could provide us the locations where staff are personally housed at, and the staff members that are assigned to those locations, and what day of operations they're at those locations. So I'll make that request through staff as well, to you, Chief, if we can receive that information.
Absolutely. And in fact, if you go into your rec centers, they're, the schedules are also posted.
Okay. So then let me get into the, right down here. Employment and expanded programs. I think all of us, I think I can speak for all of us, that we all believe that providing opportunities for youth is one of our greatest challenges and hopefully one of our greatest successes when we accomplish that. So I want to go into the employment opportunities for kids. And let me jump down. So we heard a moment ago that, and I'm going to go into the YOU program. I wonder if I did it with my sheet, because I'm taking all kinds of notes here, that it was, was it 6,000?
5,507, to be exact.
Okay, I'm looking for what, where I wrote that one down. And then, what was it, 1,100, 1,201?
1,211.
Okay. Of the, was it, was it a first-come, first-served? So how did the 11,000, the 1,100, whatever it was, how, how did they get employed versus the others? Was it based on first-come, first-served, or try to spread it out.
No, it wasn't first-come, first-served. To the, to the Chair, it's an application process. They fill out an application, and then they're called in for a process where they go over the paperwork. They have to have their work permit, those, those sorts of things. And then, and then they're selected from, from that pool.
Okay.
Would you like for Eric Dillenbeck to come up and have a few more details on that selection process?
A work permit is obtained when you, what, 14 years of age?
14, yes.
Yes, okay.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, and identify yourself, please.
I am Eric Dillenbeck, the Director of Work Experience Programs from Youth Opportunities Unlimited.
Okay, Eric, tell us.
To the Chair, we had 5,000, whatever that number was.
5,507.
507 applications received from the city of Cleveland. And the way Youth Opportunities works is we do random selection. So we literally do a random selection of youth, and...
Well, how do you define random selection?
We take a random pool, and then we, the first round of selection that we do is literally, it's, it's not first-come, first-served. Applications open on February, on February 1st.
Yes.
And then applications close on May 1st. So we, on, at the end of March, we do the first selection of appointments, because appointments start at the end of April. And then we do another round of selection for the remaining appointments in mid-April? Sorry, in, after the applications close, to finish it out.
Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to understand, so you hired 1,211, 248 were that Cleveland kids?
Just Cleveland kids.
But when you say random, you split the jobs in half and take half from the east side, half from the west side, you've divided by 17, how do you do it? How do you pick the kids?
It's a lot, to the Chair, it's, it's more of a lottery system.
It is a lottery system. It's definitely a lottery system, and it's also based on population and where our jobs are located. And it's, we have a data team that really looks at a lot of factors. And we base it on, we look at ward designation of how many applications are received from wards, and our data team does a lot of analysis and bases it on, on that. So a lot, a lot goes into it.
Okay, well, I guess my, my thing is this. I've been, I worked, I started working when I was 14 years old. I didn't, I didn't have the opportunity to work at a playground or park or anything. I would have loved to have been able to do that. I had to work in a factory on St. Clair Avenue, that's why I got messed up fingers, but anyway. But I think it's critical in this city in 2024 that we hire as many kids as possible.
We agree.
I would agree.
And so, as I say this to my colleagues, when we hear, as we did on Monday, with people asking us for 20 million to fund this, and another guy asking us for 600 million to fund that, raises serious concerns to me that where, what my priorities should be and what my priority, my personal priorities are. My personal priorities are taking care of kids and families and those that are in need of the city. That's always been my priorities here, and it's about services. So when you tell me 5,507 kids applied for a program, for the program, and how does that relate to previous years?
So this was actually a tidge smaller than 2023.
So we had even more in '23?
Just like 75 more.
Okay.
And this, this number represents a calculated over-enrollment on YOU's behalf.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot of factors. We over-enroll based on funding because we know that every young person won't work all of their allowable hours.
I understand.
So we, I hate to say the word gamble, but we kind of bank on that so that we can enroll as many youth and have many youth working as possible.
So let me try to write it down. So the 248 that were funded by the city, those are city kids?
Those are youth that were funded by the Office of Prevention and Intervention.
Of the 1,211, how many of those were city kids?
They all.
All of them were the city.
All the 1,211?
YOU employed 1,748 youth across Cuyahoga County and 1,847 youths across 17 counties.
So again, so the 1,211 jobs, those were all the city kids?
They were all city of Cleveland kids.
But of that 248?
Were funded by the office.
Were funded by the city.
Correct.
By us here.
And I do want to clean up one data point, was that the other, if you take away the 248, those were funded by the county and then Cleveland Foundation and lots of other foundations. So it was a combination of those.
Okay, so of the 248 that we funded, what was the dollar amount associated with that?
Our contract was...
900, to the Chair, 999,337 dollars.
That was, was that general fund dollars? What was that?
That was general fund dollars to the Chair.
Okay, city funds. Okay. Because as we go into the budget round, I mean, these are things that we need to understand here because we got to re, in my opinion, we got to reassess our priorities in this city. This is my opinion, and only my opinion. But I'm just, I, the more I'm, the longer I'm here, the more concerned I am about where our priorities lie, or should be, or should be. So let me get back up on my screen here, if I can find where we are at. Okay. So the stipend-based service, the 55 students, what was that? How, how did we fund that?
That was making, making our own space, the, the younger children. It was that one and the Next Gen Leadership Program. Those two programs accounted for those 55 youth.
And how were they funded?
That was from general fund. Everything that we do is from general fund.
The 990?
No, 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 no. We had a contract with Greater Cleveland Neighborhood Centers Association for 117,226. And we had a, one with Kent State University, and I think that one was 50 something.
Okay, but those were both out of general fund?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to make that request, you provide that to us, for where, how we funded the various youth programs. The line item, if it was a specific line item or, or fund number, and where it came out of, whether it be, was ARPA funds, general fund, et cetera, et cetera. Because you have here a total, 400 students were served of the, that, including the 248.
To the Chair, those were all funded by general fund dollars.
Okay, so I'm going to request that information from you, so we have that. So you had the broken, we have it broken down by ward, the number of kids working. Youth employment, we have that. Employment highlights, the, the, the 15 youths that worked at Michael's Zone and our RC, where did those funds come from?
General fund.
General fund, okay. So again, you know where I'm going. I want to know what it costs to service these kids, and why only two rec centers there?
Through the Chair, to the Chair, those, that was all we could afford.
Okay, that's what I need to hear.
Yes. That was all we could afford with those dollars.
Because, you know, we got a lot of people in this town with fat checkbooks, but when it comes to kids, it gets very skinny, or it doesn't appear, okay? So I need to understand what it costs. So if we were to operate programs that all of the youths, of the rec centers, I want to know what an estimated dollar amount that would be.
To the Chair, we can put that together.
I want that. I want to know what that is. I mean, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm beyond it at this point, believe me. Nobody knows where I'm at with this stuff, because I am sick and tired of dealing with poverty, lack of opportunity, and just 2024 to 2025, we have to do things differently in this city. That's my opinion, and only my opinion. Okay, so let's go down to expanded programs. Again, we got Esther Brooke, we got Frederick Douglas, and we got Kadel. Why those three? Was it money again?
I'm sorry, expanded program are discussing.
The expanded program highlights?
Oh, to the Chair, we were just highlighting a few key programs, but all of the recreation centers have received an expanded program.
Okay, okay. That's what I need to know. So of the young adult programming highlights, the Hoops After Dark for 2024, which I'm assuming, is it still operational? Is it over?
It's, to the Chair, it's only a summer program.
You're right. Of the, of the 32, excuse me, of the 25 players that attended the job fair, do we know how many of them ever were able to get jobs?
To the Chair, for the 25, well, a little bit of context around the 123 players. This season, what we noticed is 74% of the players actually came that's already employed with jobs, so that's also why you see kind of a downtrend with those that attended the Job and Resource Fair. Of the 25 attendees at the Job and Resource Fair, we do know that, well, Ohio Maine's Jobs is our partner, they do follow-up case management. Of the 25, one enrolled back, one enrolled in school, 10 of them were actually, 25 were all invited to the Meet the Recruiter Day with Ohio Maine's Job in September of 2024. Of those, 10 actually completed the intake process with OMJ in October. Three are actually in the interviewing process for jobs, and two are receiving assistance with CDL classes.
Okay. So please educate me and my colleagues. It was my understanding, and maybe I misunderstood, that the Hoops After Dark were kids that were unemployed.
To the Chair, it is not a requirement.
Okay.
And when we think about the Job Readiness and Resource Fair, our desire is to support any who need a job, who would like a different job, because we know a number of our young men are also not making sustainable wages.
Exactly. But I, I want to make sure that kids that don't, young adults that don't have jobs are not bumped for people who have jobs. I want to make that, I mean, because if, if they're being bumped, then that's, then that's not right. Our focus should be to try to help these kids secure employment, get the counseling that we need, that they need. So I just want to make sure that, that if I'm, if I'm employed and I'm applying to play basketball at night in the Hoops After Dark, that, that I'm not bumping somebody out that may, that maybe deserves that far more than I do for that opportunity.
To the Chair, the, the program is not, it is workforce, it's a workforce opportunity, but it is overall comprehensive wraparound services. So some of our young men come to us needing different kinds of support. Some of them want employment support, some of them also need support with mental health, or they might have a case, or they might have an issue with someone they're co-parenting with. And so our desire for Hoops After Dark is you give them the opportunity for competitive basketball, but you also wrap around resources based on the needs that they share they have.
I hope you know where I'm coming from.
I do.
Okay, so you had 128 players preregistered. How many actually applied? Do we know?
And so I do not have that data point. Samantha, do we need to?
I'm sorry, Chair, can you?
How many applied?
There were a total of 128, and of the 128, 123 were actually active participants.
So only 128 applied?
Yes.
Huh. Okay. I would have thought more would have applied, but, okay, so you picked 123?
And it wasn't that we picked, so some players, just throughout, they may not have, when we think about active participation, that's when we dwindle down to them 123.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So no one was turned away.
Okay. The, let me get, what else I can, okay. The Violence Prevention and the Systems Level Transformation Initiative, the city's Violence Prevention Initiative of 100 partners across the sector, now, does that include the Cleveland Foundation? Do we look upon them as a partner in this process?
To the Chair, the Cleveland Foundation is our partner for that grant. And so the DOJ grant required a, a core management team partner. And Cleveland Foundation, through that particular grant, did provide some funding to support the program manager that works in community in partnership with the program manager that we have funded through the grant that sits here at the city.
Okay. So let me keep going here. The ARPA-funded initiatives, the, again, I'll go back down to the Neighborhood Safety Fund, Cleveland Foundation. Of the 43 organizations that received grants, have they all been awarded? that receive grants, um, have they all been awarded that were I picked?
To the chair, all 43 organizations that received grants were awarded those funds through two separate R F P cycles.
Okay. And so is it up to the Cleveland Foundation to monitor them?
To the chair, the Cleveland Foundation is the, they do own those funds. Own is probably not the best word, but the funds were transferred fully to the Cleveland Foundation and they are under their full jurisdiction. Um, and they have a grant process, not a contracting process, and that grant process has a year-end reporting requirement.
Okay. So, so they would be able to, uh, tell us who's performing and who isn't?
To the chair, um, based on legislation, um, and I know Jason was, Jason is still here with us from the Cleveland Foundation.
Yes.
Um, has been working, um, and requested a hearing, um, with city council so that we can give you a full update.
When did he do that?
Uh, several times this summer.
I'm not aware of that. To, who did that, who was that directed to? I'm not even aware of that one.
I believe Councilman Starr also was assisting.
Okay, well, we'll set that up then. We'll make that, we'll make that, uh, we'll set that up. Well, we got a lot of, I got a lot of meetings. You guys got a lot of, putting a lot of meetings on my schedule, let me tell you right here, okay? And you better be, you better be, you better be there when I set it up, okay? I'm going to make sure of that one. Okay? So, um, we're going to set it to the, yeah, I know, for the staff to have that one. So then let me go into this. So, um, the, um, so educate me. Uh, there appears to be a number of P I O Y contracts that didn't go through the Board of Control, but have been contracted and at least partially expand, partially expended. Can you tell me why they didn't go? And I'm going to read them off to you.
Thank you.
Shaker Lakes Regional Nature Center, Exquisite Touch Culinary Services, City Music Incorporated, Buck Out Cleveland, Lake Erie Inc., Homieco's Foundation, Cleveland Music School Settlement. They, they didn't go through Board of Control, but they received funds.
To the chair, Sherry will answer.
Yeah.
To the, to the chair, um, those did go through Board of Control. They did go through, um, city council. It was, uh, legislation, our, we call it our mega, uh, mega legislation where you, uh, grant us authority to spend our contract, uh, dollars, our contract, our dollars that are under the contracted services line.
So there was an individual?
So it was an individual.
Okay.
Now, some of those, if they were under $50,000.
Yes.
Um, they did not go to Board of Control. They did not come here. Um, but under our, um, R L A 2024 31 and 2024 005, uh, those R L As funded most of our programming. And when I give you the list of the contracts and the amounts.
Yeah.
It will have on there the, um, the R L A number that it was funded out of and you can match that back to you, the legislation.
Okay. So then, okay, additionally, um, it seems that they've taken, you've taken the contracting and spending funds without legislative authority.
That's it. To the chair.
No, wait, this is another, um, there's some other groups here. Um, yeah, let me, let me get this straight here. Um, and this is for Cleveland Botanical Garden and Cleveland Freedom Project. So again, what was the deal with those two?
So Cleveland Botanical Gardens was for $49,800.
Yeah.
But it was funded under, um, R L A 2024 30, Star 31.
Large piece?
That's the large. Um, and then the other one you mentioned was.
Cleveland Freedom Project.
Cleveland Freedom Project was, uh, 27,500, I believe. We, they actually only billed us 21,622.
And that was part of that again?
That was, again, was 2024 Star 31.
Okay. So I'm trying to, because again, the staff is poring over this stuff. Those are some of the things that are, that are, um, not clear. Okay, then.
So to the chair, we just want to make sure it's clear at this table that we are in compliance.
Okay.
And we have followed the rules, our mega legislation and anything under 50,000.
Okay. So then open contracts. Um, Cleveland, uh, Greater Cleveland Neighborhood Centers Association, Henry Johnson Center, Buck Out, again, we mentioned Buck Out Cleveland, Resort, uh, Reach Successes Incorporated, After School All-Stars, Center for Arts Inspired Learning, Envision Excellence in STEM Education, Case Western Reserve, Cleveland Music, Music Settlement, Doc Community College, Cleveland Rape Crisis Center, and Fay Holly Brothers LLC. Those are all, according to what we have, open contracts.
Some of those contracts have expired and, um, so I'm not sure, to the chair, um, I'm not sure about your list. Um, but I will say that, um, the Center for Arts Inspired Learning, that, that one is the music lessons that we offer every season.
Yes.
Um, for three seasons. Um, the Greater Cleveland Neighborhood Center Association, that's the photography, the iConnect for seniors and the STEAM, uh, program that we offer every season, um, those programs.
But it would have indicated had you expended the funds. Right now, we have, there's no funds been expended.
Um, so I, I will have to get with you because.
If you could get a colored copy of this.
We, um.
Document, we're going to give that to them.
To the, to the, to the chair, those funds are expen- every season, they bill us twice a season.
Free color copies.
So, so when we contract with them, they bill us at the five-week mark. Every season is, is generally 10 weeks.
Yeah.
So they bill us at the five-week point for those five weeks. And then they bill us again at the end of the season.
Okay.
For those five weeks. So you may see a, a big balance.
Yes.
Uh, but that's for the entire year and it doesn't match up January to December like, uh, a lot of.
These were as of 9/30.
Okay.
As of September 30th, there had been no funds expended for those, according to what we have.
To the chair, we will take that list from you and we will look into it.
Yeah.
But based on our invoicing system and our record keeping.
Okay.
We are on track and these funds have been expended.
You know, because when we, as we go into this budget round, we want to know what has been expended and what has not been expended.
Right.
Because these are critical dollars that we're trying, if we need to reprogram. So we're all just trying to figure out, and this has been the, the direction of the council president, we need to know by department, by division, by section, as to what funds have been expended and what funds haven't been as we go toward the end of the year. Um, let me see what else I have before I open up for questions. Um, okay, I just want to go, uh, my, my last question, I guess I direct this to the chief. Uh, there has been, uh, this, there has been talk about an administrative, administration request to create a standalone department, uh, for P I O. Um, what's your opinion of that?
To the chair, my opinion is that we've made the request so that we can be even more efficient in the way that we operate. Currently, uh, most of the initiatives that started out of the mayor's office, things like, if you recall, mocap.
Yes.
Um, and its past and some others have been operationalized through finance. It creates bottlenecks. And so this is a desire for us to establish this, um, to codify the work. If we say that our work for young people and families is important, let's codify the office so that we can operate more efficiently and more effectively.
Okay. But since you are a, almost a, uh, an arm of the Department of Recreation, um, and so many of your programs operate out of the rec centers, um, but again, that will be for future discussion. I mean, that's some of the internal discussions we've been having internally. Uh, right now, uh, and of course, my laptop is, battery's gone, on the fritz here. Um, the, um, right now, you're part of the mayor's office.
To the chair, I, I am a part of the mayor's office. It is called the Mayor's Office of Prevention Intervention and Opportunity.
Right, right.
And to the chair, just as a point of clarification, we are not an arm of recreation. Traditional recreation functions are quite different, uh, from the work of the P I O office.
Okay. Well, we'll get into that at some time within the very near future, probably before budget. Um, so just touch on these again. I'm going to run through them very quickly. Uh, well, boy, there's a bunch of them here, so I'm going to get you copies. So these are organizations with open contracts that we have here. So I'll get you a copy of that as well, so you can comment, um, on each of these where there is, uh, open contracts. Okay. Members of the committee. Again, you have 10 minutes each. Um, we've heard a lot today. I want to thank all of you because we started at 10 o'clock. Uh, we took, um, I think it was less than 45 minutes for, for a break. Um, and now it is, uh, 3:55, almost 4 o'clock, and we're going to exceed what we did last week as I'm, I'm coming across. So Councilman Starr, you have, were up first. Matt or up?
Man, um, thank you, Dean, for having, um, these public safety hearings all this month. I don't think we missed not one Wednesday. Dean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, no, definitely, uh, first I would like to say thank you, um, everyone for coming to the table. I definitely just want to know, um, what is going on through the chair as it relates to the DOJ with the, uh, Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative, that $2 million to the chair. Do we have an update on how much money have been spent on that DOJ? I believe it was a grant that we received, um, for $2 million back in 2022. To the chair.
Uh, to the chair, to Councilman Starr, you are correct. The grant was for $1.8 million and we have received a no-cost extension for the grant. Um, as we've reported to council before, it took us a little while to hire a program manager and to get that work started. And so you are correct, um, in terms of the grant amount. Thus far, we have in process expenses for $293,000.
So therefore, we have additional funds left over from this grant that we haven't used yet. To the chair.
To the chair, uh, to Councilman Starr, that is correct. And we have received an additional year of time through our no-cost extension from the Department of Justice to make sure that we spend all of the funds properly.
And to the chair, do we have to, does, uh, P I O have to come back to the council related to how they will spend this money? To the chair.
To the, to the chief, I'd have to ask.
To the chair, uh, to Councilman Starr, there is nothing in legislation that indicates to us that that would be the case.
I'd have to ask the staff attorneys if that was the case. Right now, I couldn't answer you that.
Okay.
To the chair, also to Councilman Starr, I just want to underscore, the deliverables are not decided by the city. They're decided by DOJ based on the grant that we submitted and they approved.
Thank you. And to the chair, um, regarding the equity, what a, no, Gradient A Human Equity Think Tank LLC, um, I have some information that's showing as if they're receiving money through this grant. Is they're one of the recipients of 255,000, um, to this, for this grant?
Chief?
To the chair, to Councilman Starr, they were recently awarded, um, to, uh, cover the deliverable based on the blueprint, the blueprint.
And they're, to the, to the chair, to the chief, so their job is to do what when you say blueprint?
To the chair, I mean, through the chair, to Councilman Starr, um, as you know, as a person who attends our Cleveland Thrive meetings, the blueprint is our violence prevention plan. Uh, their work will be to go out to community to speak to residents, providers, council members about what it is we want to incorporate as a part of our violence prevention plan moving forward.
And to the chair, do this organization have any background in violence prevention work prior to this contract? To the chair.
To the chair, uh, through the chair, to Councilman Starr, I do want to make sure that we note gradient is not doing this work alone. Uh, gradient, I, I would have to go back to, um, look at the detailed notes as I was not a part of selection. There was a committee for that. Uh, but gradient has experience with violence prevention-based work, um, as well as large-scale engagement. In addition to that, they are partnering with an organization called Akita, which is a part of their work, which includes, uh, people with extensive violence prevention experience.
Yes, to the chair, I see some information from that. Um, Akita, I know Sharina Cloud, who was the previous director of Peacemaker Alliance, I know she's working on that and I believe she received her organization, um, $125,000. But then I see the other recipients in the gradient, A Human Equity Think Tank, I'm seeing Robin Thornton Hudson, Victor Reeves and Jerry Pena. I was just trying to figure out what their background when it comes to violence prevention and strategy or anything, what, which would make them, um, the one rewarded this opportunity as opposed to anyone else who possibly does this type of work that we're looking like, I mean, looking to do. And from coming to the Thrive meetings and working with the chief, I know one of the things we discussed is coming up with an actual plan for violence prevention opportunities in our community for the city of Cleveland. So that's why I'm just trying to figure out what role would they play if it doesn't seem as if they have a background in this type of work. Um, I don't know how they got to the table or how it was passed or this was awarded throughout that R F P process. So I just definitely wanted to ask that question. Um, but then also I would say is for the, for, just for context, P I O office has been up and running for how long? To the chair.
Chief?
Uh, through, uh, the Chair, to Councilman Starr, I believe P I O is in its fifth year of birth. Um, this was a, a office that was sort of up, eh, established before this administration got here, but due to COVID-19 and some other things that took place under the last administration, um, the office was not fully established. And so if you recall, two years ago now, one of the things that I came to this table with is saying that we are now fully established, uh, with full staff across all of the areas of the office's mission. And so it is a younger office. Um, it's an office that I believe was developed on the right mission of filling in the gaps. Um, often we talk about the importance of streamlining things, but the reality is some departments should focus on a core set of work while other departments or offices may be developed to fill in the gaps. And so we see the work of this newer office as being very complimentary, uh, to the work that we all know from an ecosystem, a working ecosystem perspective needs to be in place in order for us to actually reduce in, in violence in our community. Uh, I do, through the chair, to Councilman Starr, want to go back to some of the comments made because I think it's very important for clarity. When your question or remarks were posed around, um, what organization not having experience or wondering how they got to the table for, for an R F P, uh, this particular R F P went out twice. The first time that the R F P went out, we didn't get very many responses. We thought it was our job on behalf of the citizens, citizens of Cleveland to make sure it went back out again. We received responses. We established a committee that reviewed the applications and the committee came back with the recommendation, um, that this particular plan, based on the dynamics of our community, needed to be developed by people who have extensive background in engaging residents as well as people who have extensive background in violence prevention. Because we know those things need to be married together for us to come up with a strategy that will make sense for our community moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And to that point, um, I believe Ms. Sherry was here, um, prior to me getting elected as well. So before we became P I O office, what was the name of this office or department? To the chair.
Through the chair, to Councilman Starr, it has always been, um, the Mayor's Office of Prevention Intervention and Opportunity for Youth and Young Adults. However, um, I will point out that prior to, I think, 2017, it was, uh, there was one gentleman, and I can't remember.
Duane?
Yes, who was, uh, who was the office. And it had a little different focus. And then, uh, I believe around 2017, um, uh, under the previous administration, the, the mayor decided they wanted, he wanted a little different focus on this department. And, uh, so that's when, um, the violence, the, looking at the root cause of violence and trauma-informed care, uh, was kind of born. And then, uh, as chief indicated, we ran into the pandemic and so we were a little delayed on a lot of, um, what we had thought we would be doing. Um, and then, uh, when the new administration came in, we really, uh, were able to. And then, when the new administration came in, we really were able to take off.
Thank you. And through the chair, to our staff, can we put a request for all of the documents and the scoring documents from both of those RFPs related to that DOJ grant with this, with ordinance number 664-2022? I would like to take a look at that. Just want to put that on record, Dean.
Okay. I want to make sure staff has that request. Do you have that request? Repeat it, Councilman.
So, related to ordinance number 664-2022, there were two RFPs issued out. I would love to see the scoring as well as the documents or who actually applied for those RFPs, so I can take a good look at all that data and all the documents. And through, also, when I was listening in on my, on my, on my AirPods when I was in another meeting, I might have missed this question. If I have, I just talk offline. But as far as the social, social support professionalism or directors, not directors, staff at the Neighborhood Resource Recreation Centers, we do have one in each recreation center as of today. To the chair?
Chief?
Through the chair, to Councilman Starr, I'll have Unit Director Cash respond.
Okay.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, through the chair, I was trying to figure out, through the Neighborhood Recreational Resource Centers, do we have support specialists in each of those as of today?
So as of today, as, as the chief had alluded to earlier, we actually have two positions that we are presently interviewing for. And then we also have someone who is actually on military leave. And most of our support specialist staff have two recreation centers that they're responsible for. And so we ensure that there is coverage at every recreation center. If they do not have an assigned personnel there, then the supervisors or myself will address issues and concerns that the managers may call over to the recreation centers and call us and let us know if there's issues and concern. We also respond to issues and concerns from our council members to support individuals in the community. So we do make sure that we ensure coverage of all of the neighborhood recreation centers.
Okay, to the chair, within the scope of Lonny Burton and Central Rec, I know Central Rec has been closed, do we have an individual who's responsible for those two in our RC facilities?
So yes, we do. And actually, our supervisor, Michelle, is over the Lonny Burton Center. If they have any issues or concerns, she has an ongoing conversation with the manager that is there. But we are actually getting ready to assign our personnel, one of the support specialists, to Lonny Burton three days a week, sir.
All right, and through that, and through that, so if they're not, if they're splitting shifts between two sites, it will be up to the discretion of the center manager if they need them to come to their site depending on those days, or they have a time schedule or period where they go to them through the, to the chair?
No, they actually have a schedule. For example, a support specialist could be assigned at Collinwood three days a week and at Corey Rec two days a week. On the days that they are not there, if there's an issue that arises, the manager has a relationship with them where they can let us know that there's an issue that needs to be addressed, and that issue will be addressed.
Thank you. And through the chair, I know it shows that there's, was 2,969 residents supported with case management services. When we put that number out, what is, what does that look like when you say resident support with case management services? What does that entail as?
So it can be a multitude of things through our chair, to Councilman. One of the issues and concerns we have in our community is that we are actually dealing into, I tell them, we're dealing with environmental PTSD. And so our individuals in our neighborhoods may have a litany of issues and concerns that may come about. It may be some food insecurities. It may be issues and concerns that they have with schools. It may be crisis situation. Lately, we've been having a lot of housing issues. And so what happens is that individuals may go to the rec centers and they may look for a support specialist for assistance and support. And we do warm handoffs. We don't tell them, go call Cleveland Housing Network. We do a warm handoff, and we will go with them and meet them at Cleveland Housing Network to address their issues or concerns. One of the problems that our community have is trust, and they need support. So we try to build relationships. So by our staff being in the neighborhood recreation centers, they build relationships with individuals, and by word of mouth spreads more than anything. And so they make sure that they address the situations and ensure that they are addressed, and they fulfill the requirements and the suggestions or support that they have from the community. And so it's very important that we are out in the neighborhood recreation centers. The information that you saw above, as I was sharing with chief, the chart doesn't really give all the numbers. We deal with community fairs where individuals come and ask for our assistance. We deal with the mayor's walk. We work with council members to address different issues and concerns in their communities. I tell everyone as well as the council members that I appreciate that they're weavers of our network. Weavers of our network have issues and concerns that they bring together, and then we look for resources and we look for programs and services to support our community. So we consider all of ourselves weavers of the net of support for our community. And so I'm very appreciative because we are dealing with issues and concerns right now from some of our council members in trying to address the needs of our people. So yes, some of the information and referrals come from the rec centers, some of the referrals come from the council members, some of our referrals come from staff, some of our referrals come from the schools, both CMSD, parochial, and charter schools. And so what it is, we just try to provide doable supportive services to our community to ensure that their basic needs are met, and then other issues and concerns that they have are addressed.
Thank you. And through that, through that conversation, with the warm handoff and the different services that you are providing, do we keep track of the referrals that we receive from a direct recreation center? And the follow-through, what actually happens? Because I understand a warm handoff, and sometimes that warm handoff is getting with Cleveland Housing Network, starting the initial meeting with them, and then actually know that follow-through that the CHM may or may not do sometimes don't occur. Do you got any data on that?
So we, as our chief said, as well as Director Ellery, we have our new ECOVIA system to help us to do, utilize documentation, and it helps us with our follow-up and follow-through so that we can ensure. One of the things that chief is very taskful in letting us know is we want results. So we want to follow up and follow through. So yes, sir.
Thank you. And to that point, as I wrap up, Dean, I know, I haven't seen nobody at Lonny Burton in some time, and that is very important to me. We putting a lot of different dollars into getting Lonny Burton up and running. There's a lot of challenges in there at that location. So I definitely look forward to meeting who would be at Lonny Burton because that is very important. But I definitely would like to ask to the, to the chair, to the chief, what's the difference between an office and a department when it comes to the city of Cleveland? Because I know you mentioned office and department. I just want to get clarification. What's the difference between a regular department area and an office of PIO?
Through the chair, to Councilman Starr, it depends on who you're talking to. And so I think some of this is ultimately, we have been referred to as the Mayor's Office of Prevention, Intervention, and Opportunity for Youth and Young Adults, as Assistant Director Sherry shared. What we have learned is when we look at best practices across the country in the work when it comes to violence prevention from that health approach that thinks about youth and young people, it is essential that these offices are codified, right? Because we can say, right now, our chair of this committee has said, youth and young people and families are very important to him. Our mayor has said these folks are very important to him. But if they go away tomorrow, and it's not codified, it is not an office that has been put in legislation, then it means that those things that we've committed to as a community as important go away. And so this allows for us to meet best practices nationally. It also brings us the efficiency and more effectiveness because we're not channeling all of our processes through finance, which, as you know, finance is great, but they have a lot of work to do. And so we want to also alleviate unnecessary bottlenecks.
And as I, as I wrap up, to the director, I mean, to the direct, I mean, to the chief, I'm sorry, do not, do not forget, do not, do not correct me, I know. Chief, the total budget that you have for PIO in 2024 is how much?
The PIO budget for 2024 was a little more than $4 million. And I do want to flag because our wonderful Commissioner Chair, it has been sitting here, a portion of those dollars are in our budget because we do administer the Commission for Black Women and Girls, who also has a deck prepared for you, so I'm not sure if you're going to see them today, but a portion of those funds are for that work.
And for that last, and my last question, Dean, for that ordinance number 664-2022, I was trying to see the executive summary. I don't have it with me, but I know DOJ has some different deliverables. Do you have anything that you are currently working as far as the deliverables that PIO is following for this initiative? And if so, is it possible for those to be shared with us?
Through the chair, to Councilman Starr, we did speak about this a little bit when you were out of the room, but basically, this grant has three deliverables. One is training, professional development for violence prevention. We accomplished that through our conference in September, the one you attended. Two is a resident-led violence prevention strategy, that's AKA the blueprint, which we've been talking about, and we've discussed here today the organizations who've been awarded to do that work. And the third is re-granting some of the dollars from the grant around best and next practices. It's our desire to do that once we've heard from Cleveland residents, because we want to make sure that there are some resources available to execute on any thoughtful interventions or ideas that they may have.
Thank you. Thank you, PIO, and-
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Other questions of the committee members? Ms. Stephanie House Jones?
Thank you. So I'm gonna try to do as best I can. Let me, I'm gonna start off with the, the work that was identified in the Neighborhood Resource and Recreation Centers. Through the chair, to the team here, we talked about the certified park certification for park and recreation professionals. Can you talk just a little bit about that, about, A, had there been any certifications prior to, and what has happened thus far? You know, it's like how many people have been certified, and if you can go into that?
Chief, or whoever?
Through the chair, to Councilwoman House Jones, Sherry Ellery will answer the question.
Through the chair, to Councilwoman House Jones, we have had 10 of our recreation managers and leadership team members certified in the Parks and Rec certification. We just finished the classes. They were meeting twice a week, every other week, from, I think it started about May and, and went through August. And so now they're doing some coaching over the finer points and addressing the, instructors are addressing any, any weak areas that the staff members feel that they need some additional coaching on. And then they'll probably sign up to take the test in either late November or early December.
Through the chair, to the team, just a clarification. So you have 10 people who are actually certified who passed the test, or 10 people who went through the training, or were you saying you have some additional people in addition to the 10? Could you expound upon that?
Through the, through the chair, to Councilwoman, we had 10 people actually pass the test and receive certification. Now, I will say that I believe some of those people may have pursued other opportunities since then because that was actually, I think it was two years ago, when we went through the whole, the first series, the first cohort of training. We are hoping for some good results from this, this class, this cohort of trainees.
And just a clarification, through, through the chair, to the team here, so prior to the engagement of the PIO office, how many, how many, when you came in, how many individuals within Parks and Recreations were actually certified through this certification program?
Through the chair, there were no-
Oh, okay.
-members of the Recreation Department that were certified.
Okay. Oh, well, that's good to hear so healthily. I'm really trying to professionalize the, the Department of Recreation Center and bringing that shared value. Going on to the information, I know in the presentation, it was shared that a little over a half a million dollars was going to direct incentives for our early childhood learners. We talked about the centers. Do we have any of, just some of the information of like, what has that been able to do, you know, to help our, our early childhood workforce, knowing that we are in a child, childcare crisis? And if you can expound about, what does the plan look for as we think about the work that, that PIO is doing with Starting Point?
Through the chair, to Councilwoman House Jones, we know as of now that 128 staff members at family childcare centers have been supported through these dollars. As I shared earlier, a significant part of this workforce is predominantly female, black, and Latinx, and so they tend to be in a community like Cleveland, breadwinners in their households. So they are essential also to the overall workforce, meaning there are lots of other people who can't go to work if they don't have a safe, reliable place to take their children for care. And so we believe it has supported those individuals, over 100 individuals. But we also know the fact that these centers remain open. There are many, many more workers that get to go to work.
Okay. And then I think you were talking about, you had showed, going back to the work of the social, our, going into the work of our social specialists that are in our, in our RCs. Through the chair, to the team, can you all share like any trends that you are, you know, you are seeing, just, you know, being in community as far as some of the identified, well, I know you had the issues up there. I think the first one was like mentoring was a, a strong component. The other, I think the biggest other component was, was it emotional support or mental support? It was emotional support, okay. And what does that look like, or, or lessons learned that you think we, as we look at our budget moving forward, things that we could do to be more supportive of, of at least the, the Clevelanders that are taking advantage of the partnership with our social support service?
So on, on one, one thing I would like to highlight, and I'm appreciative of, is our relationship with Murdis Taylor. As you know, with violence escalating in some of our communities, when children die, when children are killed, when teachers pass away from either illness or some other incident, normally, we get a call here at our department for assistance and support and advocacy. And so we may show up at a school to support teachers, to support students, to support families, and to engage our partners like Peacemakers and Murdis Taylor to help with that emotional behavior aspect of what is happening. And so we rely very heavily on our relationship with Murdis Taylor for the, for the mental health component. They have even been kind enough to come to some of our, the council meetings in the community where different issues and stuff have escalated and, and there has been a concern. Not only do we respond to crisis from the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, we also respond to crisis from our parochial schools and our Catholic schools. We had a situation in one of our parochial schools where a young lady was practicing basketball. She went up in the air to deliver the ball, and she came down and she didn't exist anymore. And so they called over to, to the mayor's office for assistance and support. And we sent our support specialists over to work with the teachers, to work with the students, to work with the families. There was an issue with burial. We work with Peacemakers and other community partners. We have to try to build that, weave that net of support for that family. And so it took all different components. And so when we look at that, that behavioral aspect, when we look at that nurturing, supportive component, individuals in the community will call for, for help and for assistance. Also, we have different issues and concerns in our community where we rely on our partners to assist and support us. And so we navigate those resources and navigate those, those services to ensure that issues and concerns are addressed for our community. When we had the situation where we had that, that outage, that power outage here in the city, we supported the community as far as going to the rec centers, not only handing out water and assisting people with hot spots, but giving them other resources because other things came to light that they were dealing with beside the food insecurities and helping them fill out the documentation, fill out papers, and trying to get food and trying to work with the food bank and navigate resources to get those resources to the people in the community. And so there's a multitude of different things that happen in the community where we go out and we try to assist and support. And so appreciative of you, Councilwoman House, as well as Councilwoman Gray, because you have truly been advocating- you have truly been advocates and ambassadors for us in the community to try to provide services and support to the constituents in the community.
Thank you. So the other question that I have going into the support around these summer jobs, this is a thing, and then I'm gonna go back, well, let's just look at the numbers. So there were 4,296 Cleveland youth who did not get a youth opportunity, job, basically based on resources. And when you do the math, we're talking about $19.5 million. And we know, Eric, can you, through the chair to Eric, do you have the breakdown of the 963 youth that the City of Cleveland directly didn't pay for? How much of that came from private businesses, private companies? How much money?
Absolutely none. All of it.
You said what?
Zero.
Okay. So this is the problem. Okay. So I know.
We agree.
I know it. So how many times that we get calls from businesses, I promise you, there is not a week that goes by in my office where a property owner, where a business is not contacting me about the car break-ins that are being done by juveniles. But we know right now, we have 4,296 young people in the City of Cleveland who could not get a summer job. In order to fund a summer job, it is $4,500. Sorry.
I apologize.
Okay.
To the chair, to the councilwoman, I take that back.
Okay.
Three positions were funded by a private company.
Oh, you still.
CVS.
Eric, you were so cute. Oh, that is so cute.
Well, I wanted to be accurate, because.
Okay, so we gonna take the three. Okay, so $13,500 was funded from a private, I'm just.
$6,000.
Well, okay. I'm being, but again, the issue, we have a significant issue with private businesses not funding their future workforce, or their future CEO or businesses. These are our young people. And when we, it was two years ago when I said, and talking with the mayor, like, we need to have a strategy to, how are we going to get this $19.5 million, right? And so to our chair, I really think the thing about PIO, it is prevention, intervention, and opportunity. We spend so much time focusing on the I and not the P and the O. This the P. Funding summer youth programs are the P. It's the prevention. So you get to the I, we have already missed the ball if we didn't do the P. We know at minimum, right now, $20 million is needed for summer youth jobs. And then we can get to the I and the O. But we are spending way too much time focusing on this I, and not enough time and real investment and plan to get this money, which needs to come from businesses. So we need to have some conversations with the Greater Cleveland Partnership, you know, our, the presidents, councils, small businesses, who are, who is signed up to do or have a business in the City of Cleveland, like, come on. So that's kind of where I'm gonna end this here. But these numbers are, this is embarrassing. It is embarrassing in a time where people are getting record profits.
It's not even embarrassing, it's immoral, okay? What's taking place here? Let's be very blunt about it, it's immoral. And so, and your, Councilor, your time is up. But I, under the rules of council, the vice chair is not here, but the next senior member is Councilwoman Gray, and I have to go to a 5:00 meeting, so I have to leave. Again, I stated what I said earlier about what I, where our priorities should be in this town and where they're not. And so you either pay, I go by that old commercial, either pay now or you pay later. And we're paying later, unfortunately, in this city for what has not taken place. So Councilwoman Gray, you will take over the chair. In fact, you're the last one up to speak. So you're gonna be, and I thank you, wait a minute, I want to thank my colleagues who stuck it out today. We set another record today. We started at 10, we took a short break. I want to thank the members of the administration, her chief, Prior Jones, and your team that is here. And we look forward to continue working with you on a whole host of issues. The floor is your chairman, Gray.
Thank you. Don't forget your phone. Thank you. I only have one question. Thank you for your patience for being here all day during the time you guys was here. But I just want to go back to director, to director, if I'm not, if I'm off, if I'm off on this question, please help me through it. Dealing with the DOJ, that funding that came from the DOJ, was that two years ago? Help me alone, because this is like two years ago.
To Councilwoman Gray, chairing, is your question, when did we receive the DOJ funding?
Yes.
The DOJ funding was awarded in 2022. Dollars were able to be accessed in 2023.
Okay, 2023. And due to that, was the beginning of this funding coming in from DOJ, was that part of the, was that part of the program that's supposed to have been spreaded out, for that funding supposed to have been spreaded out between seven wards?
To Councilwoman Gray, you are correct. It's not funding being spread out through seven wards, but the DOJ grant and our proposal focused on seven neighborhoods across the city.
Yes, yes. Now, thank you for that. By your presentation, of this great presentation that you brought to our attention and all the information that you gave us, and then the presentation with the DOJ information in it, could you go to that with the DOJ information in it? I think that's what sparked my question that was in my head of your presentation. Now, is Cleveland Thrive is part of the prevention, violence prevention program that's supposed to have been assisting with the project within the seven wards, correct? Could you go back and elaborate on that? Because now you said up to this point, you're able to actually do something with the funding right now, correct? So could you kind of connect the dots with that?
Yes, Councilwoman Gray. And so Department of Justice, the grant is called the CVIPI Grant. We applied for the grant, and I'm sorry, I'm not the best at timelines, so I have to think.
That's okay.
Like, how long have I been here at the city? And so we applied for the grant in 2021. We received the notice of the award, and then we were able in 2023 to start to access the funds. They don't give you the full amount of the money, it's reimbursable funding. So you spend, you know, dollars and then you get reimbursed from the Department of Justice out of this particular grant. Based on data, when we wrote the grant, we looked at the seven historic neighborhoods or communities that have historically had the most violence. And that's how we determined we would focus on those seven neighborhoods. But what we also believe is, if we do things that are going to be supportive of those neighborhoods, and we learn best practices, we bring best practices in, it will be available and help the rest of the community. And so that is the way that the grant was focused. The grant had three deliverables in it. So that's basically, we told them, these are the three things we're gonna do with the roughly $1.9 million. We're going to provide violence prevention training. And so we did that with our conference, and there are plans to do some follow-up activities. The second thing we said we would do was to develop a blueprint of violence prevention plan that was resident-centered. And so we had some extensive conversation with Councilwoman Starr today about that. We've awarded two organizations to start that process. They, and so we've got that underway. And then the third was, we could re-grant dollars to best and next practice interventions or programs. We have not done that yet, and we are grateful to Department of Justice for granting us a no-cost extension, meaning they give us an extra year of time to do the work, to spend the dollars that they've already awarded us. And so once we go through our blueprint process, we'll be hearing ideas, recommendations, hopes, desires from our residents, and we will be thinking about that when we decide what the grant process will be for those dollars that we'll re-grant.
All right. Thank you for that. And thank you for that, because I know that's part of the Cleveland Thrive meetings that you've been having to provide this program and this service up to now.
Yes, and we thank you for also attending those meetings, Councilwoman.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And my second question is, I know back then, when we discussed this particular service of going into the wards, it also stated that you was going to select a certain group of either violence prevention groups and/or certain people that's going to be part of this, part of this program, so they can go into the wards to help ask questions, knock on doors, do engagements. Have that part been ministered or not? And are you working on that part?
To the Councilwoman, that's the part we're working on right now, the blueprint.
That's the blueprint and the best practice.
We've just awarded Gradian and Akita.
Oh, that's what, okay.
And they came to the last Cleveland Thrive meeting and spoke to all of the Thrive partners, got to know them a little bit better, and they'll be starting that process once we finalize all the contracts, et cetera.
Okay, all right. That's my only question.
To Councilwoman Gray, may I request making a correction? I misspoke earlier when Councilwoman House Jones inquired about how many people we were able to serve in terms of the employee retention program. I just gave her one number. We actually were able to support 824 staff in total. So I wanted to correct that. I didn't give the City of Cleveland enough credit. So thanks to the partnership with City Council and those ARPA dollars, we have actually, as of September, been able to support 824 employees.
Okay, 824 employees.
And to Councilwoman Gray, the only other thing, I did mention it when Council Chair Polenzic was here, this PIO office does administer the Commission for Black Women and Girls, and we've had, sitting here at the table with us, the chair.
Yes.
And you are very familiar with this work.
Yes.
And they did prepare a presentation, so I'm not sure where that stands, but just wanted to.
Okay, well, we have, we can go to Ms. Catherine Hayes, the head of the Commission of Black Women and Girls.
I'm in all deference.
Anyone is, go right ahead.
Okay, I think.
You gonna put it up? Eva Coon, you gonna put it up?
And I will make this quick.
Okay.
Because I'm going right through this.
But you'll protect me, right? But you'll protect me.
So luckily, thanks to Councilwoman Gray and Councilwoman Roman House Jones, you are familiar with the Commission on Black Women and Girls. We wanted, we are pleased to be here today to give you an overview on what we are working on, where we stand, and what our objectives are. And so quickly, the committee was created as a venue for Black women and girls to express concerns about their personal experiences and challenges here in the City of Cleveland. And the commission is charged with coming up with recommendations based on evidence to develop programs, policies, and legislative changes that will improve the quality of life for Black women and girls. How this came about was in 2020, the Bloomberg City Lab report noted that the City of Cleveland ranked last for Black women and girls in terms of outcomes for education, and second to last for women's health outcomes. And as a result, you helped to establish the commission. Following that, in 2022, a local organization, Project Noir, created a survey of women and Black women and girls in the City of Cleveland and proposed some outcomes as well. We met with them this morning, and the 2024 report is now in, and they have measured the difference between 2022 and 2024. And so those are the things that the commission utilized in terms of its data and research to craft the work that we do. The handout that you have currently has the current commission members. I'm privileged to be the chair of the commission, and as of this morning, Shamika Jones Taylor has agreed to be the vice chair of the commission, and she will be sworn in at our next November meeting. Also, our November meeting, we couldn't again thank our supporters, and that would be our two councilwomen who were instrumental in creating this commission, as well as the City Council Representative, Eba Coon Martins, Oda Martins. We thank you publicly for all of the work that you put into this, as well as our secretary, Eugenia Cash Kirkland. We would not be able to do the work that we do if we were not supported internally by the staff, so we thank you for that. Our activity to date has been, we had a huge all-day vision setting meeting in March of this year. We have currently held six commission meetings, including one this morning. We have scheduled additional meeting in November, as well as December. And those meetings are open to the community, as well as the staff and others around the City of Cleveland. We held our first listening session in September, and we were scheduled to hold one in November based on input that we have. We're gonna be rescheduling that. Our desire is to host a public listening meeting that includes the public Black women and girls, that they can come out and tell us what they desire as outcomes and some of the things that they are up against. So in 2025, we hope to host a public listening session quarterly. We also have created seven subcommittees, and I'll get to that in just a minute. We can't eat the whole elephant at once, and so we have divided first into seven subcommittees to address specific issues that are most prevalent and most important to the well-being of Black women and girls in the City of Cleveland, and where data and research substantiate that these outcomes are creating a health crisis for the community. We are really, we are starting to launch all of our communication vehicles, and so we have created a webpage, which launched at the end of August. We are also have been privileged to make sure that the application for the outstanding vacancies are on that website, and we are currently reaching out across Northeast Ohio, and we will also engage with the council persons to make sure that we fill those vacancies. When we talk about the work that we are doing, we are focusing on seven areas: economic development, education, healthcare, justice and civil rights, membership and recruitment. So when that, when we talk about membership and recruitment, not only are we trying to fill the remaining commission seats, we are also staffing subcommittees in these seven areas that will include external experts, as well as commission members who are leading the charge on these areas. It also includes public hearing and listening sessions, as well as research. And so the outcomes and recommendations that we hope to pose to the City of Cleveland will ensure that process improvement is in place, that resources and information that are available to Black women and girls are made known to the community and accessed, and also make sure that where we can change policy, that we will do that. And so we have just a picture of our webpages there, and the application on the webpage. And our goals for 2025, we talked a little bit about that. We want to secure additional funding through grants and corporate partnerships to make sure that we have the funding necessary. sure that we have the funding necessary to do the work to make a difference in the things that we're working on. We also have said that in 2025, the city of Cleveland and council have substantiated that racism is a public health crisis in the city of Cleveland. Many of the things identified under that crisis were some of the same things identified in the research that have impacted Black women and girls. And so we're gonna take that on head-on, and we're going to, we had a meeting, between our meeting this morning and this meeting, we had a meeting with the mayor and Project Noir, and our first tackle is going to be our healthcare systems and making sure that the care that people are getting is accurate, and also working on informing individuals how to advocate for themselves as patients. Lot of times, people have a problem being able to communicate with people of authority, i.e. doctors, about what they're feeling, what they're needing, and they're not getting those services. So that's one element that was on our list, but we confirmed earlier today that we'll be taking that on, and that mayor will be supporting us and bringing all of our local hospitals to the table. With regard to our different working committees, we're going to identify, again, we can't eat the whole elephant. So under the six committees that I identified, we're gonna come up with three specific issues that we will address on an annual basis. And so we will start the year off in 2025, identifying what those three issues are under each of those categories. And then our commissioners will work to establish committee members working in partnership with us to make sure that we address those things, not just with the commissioners, but working in collaboration with organizations that are already doing the work. So we don't hope to reinvent the wheel, we hope to add to the wheel and make sure that the wheel is rolling in the right direction. One of the things we identify is a lot of work is being done, but it's being done in silos, and so it's not necessarily reaching all of the individual Black women and girls that it could. And so we want to make a difference in doing that. And I'm gonna stop there, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions? Councilwoman House?
No questions, that's the moment, but again, because I am very familiar with the work. But no, I just really want to thank just the collection, Chair Hall, our secretary, Eugenia Cash, Eva Coon, who definitely consistent. For those who don't know, we have a team that meets every other week. Every week, oh, clarification. Every week to help to support Chair Hall and the commissioners on the team, and really looking forward to the engagement as we transition into 2025. And thank you for the PIO team for actually being the house. Thanks.
And I want to echo, I want to echo that what councilwoman House appreciate this chairperson, Cash, chairwoman Ms. Hall, and also Eva Coon. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I also am honored to be on the Commission Black Women and Girls Committee. It is awesome for us to be here. We've been together for at least a year now, correct? And the beginning has been great. The beginning has been great. And I tell you, the group of commission women that we have is outstanding. It is peaceful, graceful, and elegant. We have a chair, just actually just spoke through her presentation, you know, so elegant. So I want to thank you for that, and also thank you for your, for your team, director as well. So any more questions? Commissioner, Councilwoman Kelly?
Through the chair to my ladies here, thank you one and all, I appreciate it. Don't forget with my lady Gray and Stephanie House, if there's someone I can help with some of the different organizations that are involved with the unions, you know, especially the building trades and whatnot, I just help get a young woman who has got a child on her own, if they listen around or whatnot, and electrician's local 38, it's a phenomenal opportunity, good hourly wage, health benefits. You have conditions on the job site, you get dignity, I mean, then there's a pension at them, but the stature in her just working the last six months, the change and the belief of her self-worth is just incredible. So if there's something I can do to help that, please, I'm here, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
And we will be calling on you because unions are one of the things that we are focusing on, because we recognize it's a great living wage, it's something that could bring a family up, and something that's readily available with jobs that will be available. So thank you.
And through the chair, real quick, to me, these building trade jobs, these are gonna be the great jobs in the future. I mean, their wages are going up because there's not that many individuals who want to do them, there's not that many individuals know how, you don't have to know how. We have four, five-year apprenticeships to teach you, you know, and I'm a 45-year member of Local 310, I can't, I raised four kids on my own with a book, you know, and the self-worth that gives an individual belonging to something, a lot of our CMSD students and men and young men and women, they're looking for something to belong to, you know, and then, I mean, so whatever I can do to help, I certainly, and there's a great need out there.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. And I just wanted to say, as I think about that 150 students who had the extended summer experience without a plan yet, that this might be a really wonderful opportunity for them. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. For safety meetings.
It's over.